Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:30. We have a full house tonight. We're going to call our meeting to order. Mr. Pachowski, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels.
Yeah.
Ms. Green.
Present.
Mr. Madsen.
Here.
Mr. Majors.
Here.
Ms. Rawls.
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Bowers.
Present, thank you. Good evening again, everyone. For those that just joined us, we are going to begin our committee business this evening with the work of the Administration Committee. Mr. Pachowski, could you please read Resolution 26 of 2022 into the record?
Resolution 26 of 2022 is a resolution confirming the appointment of Stephen Y. Akima Agbar Esquire to serve as the Senior Deputy City Solicitor for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Good evening, how are you?
Hey, good evening, Council.
All right. So if you wouldn't mind taking a few minutes just to introduce yourself, I know that residents may be familiar with you interjecting on some things during our previous legislative sessions, but if you could take a moment just to share a little bit about your background, maybe what brought you to the city?
Sure, sure. As Mr. Pachowski noted, my name is Stephen Akima Agbar. And as you can see from my resume, I spent the overwhelming majority of my legal career with the Governor's Office of General Counsel. I've lived in the city, so in that capacity, I've lived in the city for the past seven years. Granted, I moved around like five times in the city, but I've lived and now I'm settled in Green Street, so pretty good there. My primary background is in government contracts and procurement. In the two agencies I worked at, I was the primary contracting attorney, starting with the Department of Conservation Natural Resources. I handled grants, different types, various types of contracts in the conservation and recreation space. And then moving forward, moving on, I went actually staying with Conservation Natural Resources, I also got some regulatory background as well, putting forth two reg packages for the department. Then moving forward, I was promoted, actually was moved on to the Department of Military and Veterans Affairs, where again, I was a primary contracts and procurement attorney. However, with DMVA, I also got some administrative litigation background, and I was the right-to-know-law attorney. As a personal matter, it's just about me, as you can see from my name, I'm pretty sure that you've never met an Akima Agbar before. Well, that's because my family's from Cameroon, West Africa. I personally hail from a more exotic land, Bloomsburg, Pennsylvania. But you know, and now I'm here with Harrisburg, I mean, now I'm here with Harrisburg and so far in my, I guess, what, four-month tenure, give or take, I've had the pleasure of intermittently getting to know the members of City Council and the administration, and I've enjoyed my time working here.
Excellent, thank you so much. This time I'll open the floor to my colleagues for questions. I will begin to my far-right Councilwoman Rawls, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam President, and good evening, Mr. Agbar. It's been a pleasure working with you thus far. I don't have any questions, I just thank you for your service, for our community, for City Council, for the administration, and I look forward to seeing you thereafter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madsen, any questions?
No, me and Mr. Agbar go back ways. He was actually my supervisor on the Wolf Transit. Life's funny sometimes, situations like this, but obviously worked very closely together when that happened, so stellar resume, very excited for the city, fantastic work for us, and already hit the ground running. Excited to see your work together.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. I don't have any questions, I look forward to continuing to work with you. So far, I've heard great things from you, so hopefully it'll continue on, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Majors, any questions?
Yes, thank you, and good evening. Just wanted to get a sense of some of the work that you've done thus far with the city and how that may differ from any of the work that you've done in the Governor's Office at the different state agencies.
Oh my goodness, thank you so much for that question, Councilman Majors, and it's almost, well, coming here, I'm definitely doing contracting and procurement, however, it's broadened my portfolio, it's really everything, that every legal matter that the city has to deal with, so, for instance, well, I guess this is a little contracting matter, however, there was that, there was a utility, there was a utility issue I worked on with respect to the right, there was a right-of-way easement issue that I worked on versus where we have to renegotiate an agreement that the city has with Harrisburg Quilling, for instance. Then also, the biggest thing probably are the MDJ hearings. As you can see from my resume, while I did, I do have some administrative litigation background, I'm primarily a transactional attorney. However, with the MDJ hearings, they're, they are judicial, but the rules of evidence and certain other rules just don't apply, so they're more, yeah, they're more like Judge Joe Brown-ish, I don't want to, not to impugn Judge Joe Brown, great show, it's funny, hilarious, it's just not court. To say, however, that is an important function we do, because, I mean, again, dealing with summary trials, and then when they do get appealed, going to the Dauphin County Court of Common Pleas, as a government, as an attorney for the state, I dealt with Commonwealth Court, now I'm dealing with the Court of Common Pleas, it's, it's different, because Commonwealth Court was created specifically to deal with disputes with the state, and you know, the Court of Common Pleas, and not to get too much in the weeds, but you know, original jurisdiction, it can hear everything. So that, I think, is a significant difference. I'm trying to think what other matters might be relevant, that I'm working closer with the, in my capacity as an attorney with Governor's Office of General Counsel, I'd certainly worked with Bureau Directors and Deputy Secretaries, where in this capacity now, I'm working much closer with the chief executive, so that I counsel her directly and advise her directly, where in the past, my advice would go through my chief counsel, and then I would advise her, and then she would, on my program, but there were many more attorneys giving her advice, so I don't know if that covers what you're looking for, but I can certainly elaborate.
Yeah, no, no, thank you, and I guess, assuming you're helping to kneel and familiarize yourself with the municipalities code, since we do have a lot of issues that come up across the city, that, you know, your resume, all good, you know, we're dealing with, you know, different kind of disputes and different types of issues here, so how's that, that process of transition, you know, going in terms of looking more at these municipal level issues versus the state level?
Thank you, Councilman. Well, at a 50,000-foot, I guess from a 50,000-foot view, it is really a lot of research, it's research and practice, research and practice, and I say that to say, for better or worse, I've been, I was thrown into the deep end when I first started here, and I had to sit down, and you brought up the codes issues, well, we are definitely dealing with a lot of codes matters, and I had to, I have to get into whatever citation, whatever citation they provide to, or whatever reason they cite, whether it's a developer, a particular person, I have to get into tax code, I have to get to the building housing code, I have to deal with the International Property Management Code, et cetera, et cetera, and so researching that, and for better or worse, because the MDJ is not, it's, there's an opportunity there to cut my teeth at a lower stakes level, and so far we've been successful in dealing with a lot of codes matters, specifically with certain property developers who have not been as responsible as they should have been. We've been tackling that aggressively from the Law Bureau's office and with good success. The ones that do appeal, where the summary appeals, and we dispose of them accordingly, but I, you brought up codes, and actually it's apropos, because I've been working a lot with the Codes Office, and they've sought my help continuously.
Okay, and then my last question is, in your short time here, what are some of the things that you see that that office can approve upon, and how could your skillset help our law office, our law bureau make changes to the way we do business in City Harrisburg?
I'm going to organize our contracting process, and I'm going to, I guess, what's the best way to say it? I have a personal chart of where contracts are, how they're flowing, how they're going, and I'm looking for the best way to make it more office-wide, and ideally, I want to work towards a system where everybody knows where contracts are, what stage of the process, the contracting process there are, whether the drafting process, negotiation process, the signature process, to get a better understanding of when contracts will be entered into and will be good to go. Second thing I'm really working, hoping to do is, certain contracts we can standardize, specifically in the procurement process, have background in that, working with our procurement office, sometimes they're not sure what contracts to use, what terms apply, but we do a number of contracts enough times whereby, really, the law bureau should be more of a, I mean, I don't want to say glancing at it, but really taking a look at it, it shouldn't really require as much effort as it does for certain contracts that we do repeatedly, so I'm hoping to work with the procurement office to standardize certain contracts that we do repeatedly, so that, you know, if it's the same thing, just different vendor, or hey, vendor A is selling us this widget for this amount of money, fill those in, the contract is good to go, use the contract, sign it, go, rather than waiting three days, four days, a week to do something.
Thank you, no further questions at this time, President Bowers.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Councilwoman Daniels, do you have any questions?
First, so prior to working for the city, what percentage of your work would you say was litigation, and of the litigation, what percentage were you defending and what percentage were you a plaintiff in?
Gosh, prior to working for the city, percentage-wise, at DCNR, very little, very, I think I had maybe 5% of my work was litigation, I was wholly transactional, like I said, contracts, regulation, legislation. At Military and Veterans Affairs, it picked up a little bit, and I would say I was primarily defending, so at Military Veterans Affairs, that, you know, working with veterans, there's a portion there where veterans can apply for certain benefits, and so for the most part, and there was, that was a fantastic agency whereby they work to provide benefits, and they want to work with the veterans. There were certain occasions where certain veterans simply didn't qualify, they had, under the laws as written, my client, the bureau at that time, just could not provide the benefit to them, so they would deny them, when they get denied, they have the right to appeal that denial, and so when they would do that, I would defend our bureau's actions in denying their appeal, so in that instance, yes, I was primarily defending the agency's actions, and that's where most of my litigation came in. Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman Daniels. Councilman Rodriguez, any questions?
Thank you, Madam President. How you doing, Stephen? Good to see you. It's always good when you're out and about in the community, and you run into other families that you work with, it was great seeing you and your family. With our current policies and code system as far as ordinances, quite a few of them are kind of outdated and kind of could be updated, how can you help in kind of modernize that system?
Councilman Rodriguez, that is, that is actually a great question, and honestly, if I could sit and just do that, it would be a fantastic, fantastic project to bite into.
Not to do.
It's just, given, given the breadth of what we, I mean, as you're aware, what the city does, what the city's involved in, it's just, it's aspirational, but challenging to really do. That being said, perhaps specific ordinances that become, that whether they're subject to litigation, or whether there's some pressing issue requiring us to act on them sooner rather than later, that's something I could definitely tackle, like I told your colleague, Councilman Majors, prior to, as far as researching the history of the ordinance, researching why it was in effect, working with City Council to find out if it's still needed. There are certain ordinances that we've had for a long time to address a problem that no longer exists, and yeah, we have them in the books, but you know, almost look at it like a pruning process, like hey, let's, let's cut it down, let's make things more transparent, so that way, the city, the citizens of Harrisburg understand what ordinances are in place and why they're in place, and what ordinances, you know, no longer really affect their daily lives.
Thank you for that, and you had mentioned, you hit something right on the head, you mentioned working with council more diligently, ensuring it's something we may even need, how do you intend to work closely, or more closely with council as far as drafting and implementing policy?
First, I need to really do a better job, I want to make myself more available to you guys, and the, I guess in the short time I've been here, it's really been drinking through, from a fire hose, and every single, every single day, there's something new, and not just like one thing new, there's probably 12, 13, 14, 15 things new, and so I would say that I need to take advantage of the opportunities like this one now, and I've seen you guys in the City Council meetings, and I've seen you guys in council, in your offices, taking advantage, get to know you guys better, let you guys get to know me better, let you know, get to know what I'm working on, and how I can, I can assist on a certain thing, so for better or worse, Neil is a breadth of knowledge, and it's very easy for him, for me to sit back and let him do a lot of the advising on certain issues that you guys deal with, but I need to do a better job of stepping and say, hey, Neil, you can work on these other matters, I can take this certain issue and talk to Councilman Rodriguez, or Councilwoman Daniels, or Councilman Majors, et cetera, on this particular topic. Now, granted, again, I'm four months in, I'm still getting up to speed on a number of the issues, so obviously it makes sense that he's going to, he's going to talk to you about these things, he knows it like the back of his hand. That being said, in time, I imagine, in fact, in time, I expect to be providing more advice and counsel to you guys on certain actions you wish to take as a body.
Awesome, thank you for that, and then just one last question slash statement, and I guess it's, it should be asked just for the residents in the room, but also the ones watching, in your new position, and you know, I've seen you work, I know how diligent you work, and thank you for that, will you always put your best foot forward and always make your decisions for the best interest of the people in the City of Harrisburg in your new role?
Absolutely, Councilman Rodriguez, that's why I'm here.
Thank you for that, no further questions, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. I don't have any questions, I am confident in your, your work product thus far, I look forward to continuing to work with you, it's been a pleasure meeting you and working with you over the four months, and I look forward to the future, so thank you very much for being here and for participating in our work session.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. So with that, I would like to move to add Resolution 26 of 2022 to our legislative session agenda for a formal vote. This concludes the work of the Administration Committee. Next committee business, we have the Budget and Finance Committee. Vice President Chair Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. So the first order of business for the Budget and Finance Committee is the quarterly report from the Bureau of Finance, so I would turn it over to Ms. Marita Kelly and Mr. Brian here to get us started.
Thank you, Vice President Green. We are prepared to present to you this morning, or this afternoon, the first quarter report, this is a relatively new process, as we usually do a mid-year report, and Vice President Green has worked with us and has decided that it would be most wise to have quarterly reports, and we certainly concur, and Brian will be doing the presentation this evening, and certainly we will open for questions as needed, but thank you for agreeing to allow us to present the first quarter status, thank you.
Thank you, Marita. Good evening, everyone, committee members, City Council members, President Bowers, Chair Green. Just have a brief overview of the first quarter, mainly involving the two major funds of this city, the General Fund and the Neighborhood Services Fund. First slide up here is a summary of revenue and expenses for the quarter, it's broken down the first three months, and there's a year-to-date column. This is the format we use when we report to Department of Community and Economic Development, DCED. We also provide detailed statements that address budget variances and comparisons, but I don't have these tonight, as I wanted to keep this on a summary level. You can see for the month of March in revenue, the city achieved $8 million in revenue, which is not a typical month, I wish it were, but that's primarily sourced by discount period real estate tax payments. Expenses are higher also in the month of March, and that's an easy explanation, as the city actually, based on our timing of pay periods and check runs, we had, excuse me, we had three in the month of March, we typically have two. You can see the cash position increase from 27 million at the beginning of the year to 27.7 million. The second slide just has a few comments, related comments, highlights, again, 16 million in revenue for the first quarter, impacted by the discount period real estate tax collections. We had resulting 2.4 net revenue for the first quarter. Total expenditures, this is a budget item, it's not reflected on the summary schedule. Total expenditures of 17.4 million, that also includes encumbrances, which is meaningful, open encumbrances, open purchase orders as of the end of the quarter, and when you combine the two, you can see our percentage of budget utilized so far is very close to 25%. Given where we are in these first couple of days in May, I also took a look at April, I haven't completed our formalized reporting, but there's subsequent activity that's been reviewed. Our revenue for the month of April is very large, again, and that is the final month of the discount period of tax collections, that's what's driving that. And then when you bring it forward, year-to-date expenditures of 22.2 million, again, including encumbrances, where we are pushing, it's a reasonable percentage, 31.4%, which is close to one-third of the, of the budget. And I mentioned the cash position, through the end of April, we're now up to 33.5 million. Interestingly enough, compared to last year in April of '21, the city was at 39.7 million, so we're climbing back. That lower amount right now, of course, is reflective of the debt, the significant debt expenditures the city achieved back in November of last year, with the bond insurer forbearance payment, and also the defeasance of the stadium bonds. That's the General Fund, I'll move on. Next slide is for the Neighborhood Services Fund.
If we could just see if anyone has any questions on the General Fund before we go to the Neighborhood Services Fund. Do any council members have any questions about what was explained so far? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair Green. Neighborhood Services, a little similar format, a little bit different, just because we have Neighborhood Services main, which is mainly Public Works, and there's also a Parks Maintenance component. First column, there's also a column, as you know, for the intergovernmental municipalities, the Three Boroughs, Steelton, Penbrook, and Paxton. And there's a combined total in the middle there, and then also, the older funds of the city, the Sanitation Fund and the Disposal Fund are still active in the sense that there is lean revenue still materializing from when those liens were put into inception, they're tied to the old fund, so we track that, and we of course include that as a consolidated part of the overall Neighborhood Services Fund. The next slide has some highlights on that schedule we just viewed. For the quarter, we have 4.5 million in revenue. Most of that, of course, is attributed to the main part of the Neighborhood Services Fund, but the boroughs have a piece of that as well. The net revenue over expenditures, which is good, it's 1 million for the quarter, and 800,000 is attributed to the main part of the Neighborhood Services Fund. Working in budget on item three, our total expenditures, 4.2 million for the quarter, and again, including encumbrances, that percentage is very close to 25%, which is what you would expect, reasonableness-wise. And then also, I did a subsequent look, similar to the General Fund, for the month of April, 1.4 million in revenue, one versus 1.1 million in expenditures, so the month of April was, was a productive one. And on the expenditure side, through April, 5.3 million in expense, and that is 29, not quite 30%, not, not, not really, a little ways away from about a third, but that's still a favorable percentage. Cash position, this is a good presentation in the sense of how cash has increased recently, from 7.5 million at the end of March, and now up 7.8 at the end of April. That compares to prior year, where we were at 7.3 million at the end of April of 2021. So, so given that, I took a look at the city's collections relative to Neighborhood Services, the refus and disposal billings, and I went back as far as 2017 and just looked at, on a straight cash basis, just comparing our, our collections during the month compared to what was billed in revenue. And that collection percentage, back in 2017, for example, it averaged around 86%, and then it, it tailed off dramatically, went down to about 80% in 2018 and 2019 as well, and it's starting to rebound, especially in 2021, it's back up over 90%, really around 95%, and for the first quarter of this year, it's pushing 98%. Again, this is just comparing actual collections during the month compared to our billings that go out. There's still a significant amount of receivable balance, though, that's, that's out there that is still being, is still being analyzed. Any comments or questions on Neighborhood Services?
I'll start with my right hand, with Councilman Madsen.
Yeah, so this is helpful, because recently, council received a report from the ICA, and in their report, they mentioned Neighborhood Services Fund, and that, you know, I guess in their opinion, we could do a better job of some of the outstanding accounts that are, I guess, they haven't been paying their trash bills essentially, so we could do a better job of finding them and collecting them, but what I'm hearing here is that we are collecting, pretty much we're sending out notices, we're getting 98% of them coming back in, correct, or we're paying 98%?
It's, it's for current, current billings, there, I, there is, there is some inroads there as to the prior balances, I, you know, I would have to think some of that, and I don't have that detailed data here this evening, but I would think there is some success of whittling down those balances that have been outstanding for so long, compared, comparatively. Comparatively, it's still a significant amount, but there has been some progress made. If you like, I can drill down further on that and send you the schedule that I completed.
Yeah, could you? I think that'd be helpful. And Kelly, I guess, in your opinion, what the I C A reported to, I guess, the Commonwealth and council parts of that Neighborhood Services Fund, do you agree with that assessment? That we could do a better job of reflecting those outstanding accounts?
Well, as Brian said, there's some data that we probably would need to review and make sure that everything's accurate. The arrears is a significant amount and it's a concern. But I think we will continue to do our due diligence to analyze it, let you know. And as we have noticed, some improvements to that. So that could be now that we're coming out of the recession, people are having, you know, more available resources to catch up, so to speak. But we think that at some point, there has to be some pursuit of those funds because they're pretty significant and the auditors remind us that each year. So we would like to provide more data and information to you, but we weren't prepared to do that this evening. So our hope is that we can continue to see that positive catch up on the delay.
Yeah, I didn't mean to spring a question on you.
No, no problem.
Recently, and while we had you here, figured it'd be something you're familiar with since you've been working, it seems like, very well with the I C A for their report. So when you have that data and then maybe, given the likely fall under Public Works as to how to do these collections among some other committees, I would love to sit down with you and the team and figure out a way to address it through some policy, how we can get those council arrears.
And you may be aware that the I C A has granted the city an extension, a 60-day extension to file our reports, on the five-year report. So we can include some of that data in that report to the I C A. And we certainly will be having discussions with Vice President Green as our chair to make sure she's kept fully apprised of the information we plan on reporting in that June 30th report to the I C A.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Councilman Majors?
Yes, and thank you. And similar to Councilman Madsen, this is a good to see that at least we're, you know, the collection rate is going up. So is there anything that we can directly attribute that collection rate increase to year-over-year? You know, we haven't really, if we did pass legislation to try and encourage people to get up to date. I know there's other legislation that may be coming down to look at a way to improve our collections even further. But since we haven't had anything major since some of the change, some minor changes we did a few years ago, and we're seeing a 98% collectory now, you know, over five years from 80 to 87. What can we, is there anything you can directly attribute that to?
Um, I wish I knew. I mean, as far as a really detailed or highly accurate explanation, other than looking, just looking at the numbers. A part of, when the rate has increased even through 2020, I'd say the end of 2020 and into '21, which reflects, of course, the effects of the health pandemic. And related to that, I know the city has not been charging penalty amounts related to that. I don't know if that creates more of an incentive for people to be more intent on getting their bills paid quicker or even satisfying past due amounts. But the percentages are, I mean, they are showing that trend. And even the receivable balance, again, I don't have the specifics on that, but it is lower, you know, in comparison to prior times. It could be, you know, just better economy too, within, not so much this year, of course, you know, with the effects of what's been happening inflation-wise. But I think last year was a bit of a recovery and had that impact on these rates.
Okay, and then I know, you may not, I don't know if you have the number off the top of your head, but, you know, I know we do have a significant arrears and, you know, on the books in terms of what's still owed to the city. Do you happen to know what that number is?
I do. As of the end of last year, I have a total of 12.7 million. And that breaks down, 3.7 million is refus and 9 million is disposal. Now, by comparison, that's the end of last year. By comparison, the end of March very recent, the total is 11.6 compared to 12.7. And that 11.6, Councilman, breaks down as 3.6 in refus and 8 million in disposal.
Okay.
So both sides are down somewhat. And again, that's the number, the balances I'm seeing as to what specifically is creating that. I don't have the best answer right now, but it just seems like there is some good economic news there.
Right, and I know our law bureau, we have to get the staff off our law bureau so we can have folks that be able to go after some of the folks that are delinquent to the city. But could you also see if you have, I don't know if you have it, or we talked to the City Treasurer about the breakdown between commercial properties versus individually owned properties?
We can obtain that data from the utility billing system, I believe.
Okay, and we'll reach out to get that information because one of the things we've always, that we've seen is we've had a lot of delinquent commercial accounts that a smaller group of people owe the city a significant amount of money in arrears. And I know the law bureau have been working to try to address some of that. But thank you enough for the questions on this at the start. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Majors. Any other questions for my colleagues? Thing done, I'd like to say thank you for being here tonight to present a quarterly report. It's quite refreshing to get one. It allows us to kind of see that real-time financial picture of the city. And it's not only good for City Council, but also for the residents to know what's going on as the year goes on, not just getting a mid-year report sometimes and then caring about it more at budget time. So I think it's very important and I look forward to continuing to work to bring this transparency.
We're very happy to provide this information. Anything we can do to assist and provide backup information, we're happy to do. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item of business for the Budget and Finance Committee is Resolution 25 of 2020. Mr. Petrowski, would you read that into the record, please?
Resolution 25 of 2020 is a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to enter into a professional service agreement with Mayor Dussel, P C, for the purpose of providing audit preparation services to the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you, and then I'll take it that Brian is here to represent the city for this?
Yes, I'm back again.
All right, if you could just give us an overview of the resolution and just how do we choose Mayor Dussel? You know, I know that we do audits annually, so if you could just kind of give us a background in how we got here.
Sure. As you know, the city's financial audit is currently conducted by the firm of Boyer and Ritter. In the past, we've used Mayor Dussel for assistance with audit preparation. Mayor Dussel used to be the city's independent auditor. So they have a, they're quite familiar and they have good working institutional knowledge of the city's financial activity. This request primarily, it's consistent with the prior years. In the areas, the main areas they assist us and assist me with include what we were just talking about, the utility revenue and receivables portion. Also, the city's O P E B, other post-employment benefits liability, which has become more complex in the recent year, which includes accounting for deferred items, inflows and outflows. Also, another significant area is pensions and similar reporting with the liabilities associated with the pensions, the net pension assets. That also includes deferred inflows and outflows. And Mayor Dussel was very familiar with Capital Region Water. And they, as they can, I believe they are still their auditors. And as you know, we have interfund amounts on both books, amounts due to and due from for both entities. So they're quite familiar with that. They can utilize those work papers to help tie in to what the city has on its books. So those are the four primary areas that they assist us with to get ready for the 2021 audit, which I anticipate being ready by the end of June for Boyer and Ritter to come in and do their normal audit procedures.
Thank you, and if I'm correct, the amount in the contract is $17,850?
That's correct, Chair Green.
And the work is looking at about 170 hours of work and preparation?
Correct, as stated in their engagement letter.
I will open it up to my colleagues for any questions. I will start to my far left with Councilman Rodriguez.
No questions for me. Thank you.
Councilwoman Daniels?
Have they been doing pre-audit preparation work?
They've done two years. It coincides with the three-year audit package involving Boyer and Ritter.
And do you know, for the auditors, there's a best practices of five years? Is that the same recommendation for pre-audit?
That seems quite reasonable. And I think that would be a proper thing to consider review. Currently with Boyer and Ritter, and I know you're talking about Mayor Dussel. It's a three-year agreement, but there is the option for two individual one-year extensions. So we can't consider that at the time after the third year has been completed. Again, you know, that fresh eyes perspective.
But it's not a requirement. It's a very different in nature. The reason it's a best practice for the auditor is because they're supposed to be independent of the city. The reason you have your pre-audit is because they have knowledge of the city to help you get ready to prepare for an audit. So it's a very different set of responsibilities.
Thank you, Councilman Majors.
No, the question I have was already asked and answered. Thank you.
Thank you. President Bowers?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Madsen?
No questions for me, thank you.
Thank you, and Councilwoman Rouse?
Thank you. Good evening, and I don't have any questions. Mine were answered as well.
I don't have any further questions myself. If you have anything you'd like to add, feel free to. If not, I will recommend that this be placed on the next legislative session.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you very much. Next, our last order of committee business is the Public Works Committee. Chair Madsen.
Thank you, President Bowers. I'll let folks get settled here. You have a few familiar faces, but I see a couple new faces. So if everybody could just introduce themselves quickly for the record and jump on into the presentation.
How you doing? Thanks. Project manager, C Harrisburg. In your department, right? Wes Heisley. Chad Decker, our Dalwitz engineers, engineer for a week contract early this year. You can help me see through the process of bringing this up to date, which we will come to you with, in reference to State Street project. So we're going to continue with our PowerPoint, please.
Great. What's yours?
Designed itself again in 2018. At that point in time, necessity in that area that was brought forth. Of course, neither one of the three of us were on staff at the City of Harrisburg. So we're only going forth with what was brought to our attention. Bidding was let go, brought to Dayton, June 24, 2021. Contract was awarded to Kinsley, who's currently on there as of a date as now. Work itself started on April 4, 2022. And on April 20 of 2022, the cease and desist order, I had to address to Kinsley in reference to our residents on State Street, had an interest in slowing stopping process. So we did so, had an interest to our residents. We have a problem, want to hear what the problem is so we can move forward. 27th, '22, we had a conference, a video conference, which was, and not, and all the constituents at hand, what we can do in terms of moving forward. We created five engineering directives, which we will issue as time moves forward. And Kinsley himself has continued construction right now, as you'll see. Some of their trucks, manpower is up there to start some of the five directives. And that will move forward with Wes.
Good evening, everyone. So as part of the redesign for the State Street project, we want to look at what is going on, what was designed. And then we want to identify what the priorities need to be so that we can move forward and come up with a better idea of how to treat this section of roadway. In speaking with the city staff and the mayor and Pendite, we devised these four design priorities in order. And the number one priority obviously is the elimination of pedestrian tests, the zero, division zero.
One moment. Mr. Bolak, would you mind turning it to presentation mode so that the audience can see it better?
Or F5, F5, and it'll be good to go.
Ah, there you go. Thank you. The number two priority that we came up with was the, to maintain the present on-street parking and access for the physically. Felt that that was the second priority that we needed to maintain in order, when we started looking at this street scape and how we want to treat it. The third priority we came up with was to provide vehicular drop-off for the schools, mainly between 16th and 17th Street. And finally, the last priority, the fourth, would be to accommodate bicycle travel on State Street.
Yeah, if folks could wait for their comments and so public comment, and then, you know, we will hear your concerns, but please let the gentleman do the presentation. Thank you.
So as part of this redesign, we developed this in a three-step process, three phases. The first phase is kind of, now, understand that this is a process that if this were done through Pendite as Pendite requires, it would take somewhere around three to four years. And that was, if you look at the timeline, that's about what it's been on the initial design process. So we're trying to condense a lot of this. We're not skipping steps, but we're trying to condense it and make things go a little quicker, fast-track things so that we can get the contractor, keep the contractor moving without any delays, save the city money hopefully. So the three-phase process, the first phase, will be to develop two or three layouts based on those priorities that we've already generated. We'll come up with two or three layouts. And then hold what I call so what I call working sessions. I'm a visual person, so what I like to do is take the entire set of the, the entire street scape and lay it out in a drawing and then we'll add out onto a table and stand over it and we can talk about it. Talk about what we like, what we don't like. When someone points out, you know, Mr. Heisley, I think we should get rid of all these streetlights along that corridor. When someone points out, you know, Mr. Heisley, I think we should get rid of all these streetlights along that corridor. I can come back to my priorities and say, well, you know, the number one priority is to eliminate the pedestrian deaths. That's definitely not going to So I think we have to get rid of that idea. You know, so we can, we can use those priorities when we start talking about what features we want, how we want this thing to be laid out, what we want it to look like in the end. And then the phase two will be to, to take that one layout that we've all agreed upon. Everyone said, you know, this is, this is the, you know, we don't all, we won't all get everything we want. But hopefully, we can arrive at a point where we get what we need, and everyone can be happy with what we, we come up with. Then we need to take that and go to the regulatory authorities, PNDOT, DEP, whoever is in authority over that, and make sure that they are in agreement with our design. And then finally, the third is to sit down with the contractor and show this layout to them. And see what we can do as far as where they are right now in their construction, and see how we can, we can mitigate or negotiate how we can make the new layout work with what they've already purchased, what they already have in stock. And come up with a budget number and negotiate a final price for that, that, that work. So at this point, I'll take questions or comments.
So first, thank you for the presentation. It's been a hot topic as of late. So we appreciate the administration hearing the concerns from the community, from all aspects of this. I think you nailed it on the head when you said, you know, we're probably not going to make everybody happy with this. But we certainly have to find some sort of compromise here to accommodate. But I think the most important thing that we all have to consider, this is about public safety and the safety of our residents. It's been a very dangerous road and led to a lot of deaths in the community. So first and foremost, that has to be our priority moving forward. You know, I'm not going to weigh in a share of public works on, on the benefits or the pros of biking versus, you know, comfort in certain levels. I think, you know, hopefully, we can just reach a third way there and a compromise that, again, probably won't make everybody happy, but we can all kind of live with as a community. So at this point, what I'll do is open it up to questions, and I'll start, because it does touch on public safety largely. To the left with Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Chair Madsen. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here this evening and making your presentation to council and the residents. How often did you contact any of the residents in the area, in the State Street area, or have any kind of interaction? Just their opinions and their wants and needs?
So, so to answer that directly, again, neither one of the three of these gentlemen, myself, were here prior to that point. To my understanding, there were six opportune times to have a meeting. In all fairness, some residents probably weren't there, or the ones who were there, all that come. I can't answer that in totality, because we weren't present. I apologize for that.
Okay, I just asked because Daywoo, being a new engineering firm, making a, you know, business transaction with the city. Initially, when we spoke about it, we really encouraged them to really reach out to residents. Because every community, it's not the same. Every community has different needs and wants, and every resident, you know, some get up later, some get up earlier. But it is their neighborhood, and they are used to the way things work in their system. And I think we owe it to them to at least see their wants and needs specifically, before we even break ground anywhere.
Excellent state. Hence the reason why we put a hole in it. I create a cease and desist order for the moving forward. So that's why we're here, and I love the fact that the audience is here. And they'll hopefully more show up as we move forward with this process. This is what we need to hear, to be everybody here and all constituents at hand on board with it. Council, administration staff, employees, and PNDOT as well. So yes, you're correct one hundred percent. Thank you, sir.
No, no, thank you. And from a public safety standpoint, any way that the committee, and I'm pretty sure council feels the same way, can assist moving forward. Whether it's notifications, whether it's sending something in the bills, whether it's going door-to-door ourselves, we do it. When we need votes, I have no problem doing it, just to alert the residents. But anyway, we can help. I personally would say I'm willing to help as well. Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
No further questions.
Thank you for that. Councilman Daniels.
So, this is kind of the proposal going forward. I guess, I mean, wha- what does the record pre-starting of the project?
Don't clearly understand what you meant.
Yeah, because I'm a little confused. I mean, normally, when we do a project, we, especially the larger ones, there are opportunities for like input. So there must have been something before we started working on it.
As I stated with fellow counsel, to my understanding, there was three to six meetings that were brought forth. Again, I wasn't here. Neither one of the two gentlemen were here with me prior to this point. So what we're doing is our due diligence, making sure we do communicate with not only public council itself, so we can advise that practice as we move forward. And this is what we're doing right now.
So if there's no record of those events, or?
Is that this was all part of a larger Vision Zero project? So it wasn't specifically a State Street project. So when the meetings were held, they weren't State Street meetings. They were Vision Zero meetings. So obviously, it's not going to draw the same audience. When you're talking about overall road safety in the city of Harrisburg. So I think it, I think this highlights the importance of having smaller project meetings before the actual project starts. So you can look at something as a whole, and we're looking at the entire city and all of our dangerous streets, and what are different things that we can do? You're not going to draw the same audience until you start like cracking up the ground in their neighborhood. Because now you're impacting my everyday life. Now I'm going to take, you know, pay more attention to the plan. And so I think that, you know, as we move forward, it's important for us to have these meetings, because Vision Zero didn't just talk about State Street. Vision Zero is a, it's a pretty thick packet. It was a lot of meetings. There was a lot of money put into coming up with this. There were short-term plans that were made, such as just redrawing lines. There were long-term plans, such as changing the entire street scape. And so if you miss one of the meetings, you may have missed something very important, because you may, it may have been a meeting that wasn't held on State Street, where we talked about State Street. So it's important for us to then go back out to the residents and explain things further and get their input on a smaller scale, instead of just an entire, what's the safety of the city's street project. So I think that's kind of where some of this comes from, is that we looked at the entire picture. We have meetings on the entire picture, and then we come and say, hey, well, you remember five years ago, you talked about this, and you're like, no, five years ago, you talked about Seventh Street. Well, you're like, no, we talked about State Street at that meeting too. Well, I wasn't there for those five minutes. So I think it's important for us to really have that entire conversation when you start going into the neighborhoods. It's essentially like the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a multi-year document. It took many years to develop. But when we, when we start implementing those plans, we still have to go back to the residents, because times change, things change, prices change, which is something I'm interested in, because the price of materials has changed. So what's the overall budget of this? But that, that, I'll get to that when it comes back to me. I'm sorry for interrupting, but that's just kind of how we, you know, kind of the background story of how I think we got here.
No, thank, and that's kind of clarifies my line of questioning. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Major.
Yes, thank you, and I'm take one of these off, because it's got double masked up right now. Yeah, so Vice President Green addressed some of where I was going to go. Because both of us, one of us having served as public safety chair during that process, and I served as public works chair during the initial Vision Zero plan process. It's, as she said, it's one thing to talk about, it's in the, at the thirty-thousand-foot view, but now we're getting down to the the ground level of everybody's individual life. So with this redesign, I'm seeing the phases as great timeline. What's the timeline that we want to discuss for this? Because I know you want to expedite it. So I'll start with my question first. So the work that's being done now, what work is that? And how long is that process going to include? I know we're still talking about doing the ADA accessibility currently. So what is going to be going on at the, at this current moment?
At, at the current time, we are, like you stated, finishing the nineteen eighty-eight ramps that are up in the State Street area. They are definitely needed. We're also looking at the lights, structures that can be put up. We're not putting any physical lights on. Just put the structures up. Because you're also encompassing storage, and we don't want to include any extra storage costs. We don't have to, like, avoid that. Then we have, we call storm inlets that are being placed in the area as well. So we, again, don't want to incur, incur any extra storage costs, so we get, we're available to put that in as well. So, and one other factor is taking place also, we're putting a conduit for the particular lights that are going in. We start up on a reservoir park, we're making our way down throughout the streets, making them on Thirteenth Street, and if necessary, beyond. That's where we're at right now. So everything else, in reference to the street structure, which we're not paving, lines, parking areas, and all that are at a pause, pause, until we figure it out in our design phase. Now, that being said, again, like I stated earlier, this was created for a four-year, five-year process. We're trying to reduce and have it back on board within two and a half to three months. That's a lot to ask for, two and a half, three months.
Okay, so pause right there. So, we'll pause it. So, just so we're clear for everyone, the only work that we can expect, and what's the timeframe for the work to be done? So the work that you discussed, what's the timeline, timeframe to get the nineteen eighty-eight ramps, the, the light structures, the inlets, and the conduit? What's the timeline for just those specific?
That would be specific to Kinsley Construction, as far as what their construction schedule is. But my understanding is that they intend to do that during this construction season. And that was to be a part of a larger package, which included line striping and signs and markings. Now, the pavement markings and the sign structures are not included right now. But
Folks, just wait.
But Our work, hopefully, our work can keep them moving. Again, it's kind of difficult to put a schedule on what we're trying to do, because it does, there's, we want to do, we want to do what's right. So we want to reach out to the public. We want to get people involved, but that takes time.
Absolutely. And, and so, again, we, we understand that. But, again, so we're not sure what the timeline is for that work yet. So for this engagement that we're looking to do, what does that look like? I know when we've done other engagement in other communities, when we've done projects, there were a series of meetings with the public to try to get their input. You guys have a lot of work that you seem to want to do in a short amount, in a short timeframe, but particularly having three different designs done. You've got two to, two to three month window. I know we have at least one done. What does that timeframe look like? So getting the other designs completed for public viewing.
Yeah, I'll just add to that.
Yes, you have a little closer.
All right. So I think what we have to keep in mind, it's pretty rare for a construction project to stop in its tracks.
Agreed.
So we're all in somewhat uncharted territory. So our team was brought on just in about the last two weeks, try to make things right. So we understand there's a lot of controversy. Parking is everything, right? Pedestrian safety is there. That's why we're here. Those are our primary focuses. So Wes laid out the three-phase process. Phase one is gathering community input. Okay, so that's going to have to happen in about the next thirty days.
Okay, so thirty days. So what does the next thirty days look like in terms of gathering community input?
So we're going to have to have workshops that are going to have to be scheduled here in the next few days, to get dates on the calendar, location set. Work through Percy for that. Get the community together, hopefully do it near State Street, bring the project to them. Gather their input. What are their priorities? So I heard tonight, bike lanes are not popular. One thing to keep in mind is that the funding for this project was a multimodal transportation fund grant. So a component of that funding is bike lanes. So bike lanes were part of the original design. It was approved by PNDOT. It was approved by the city. It was put out for bid, and construction got underway. So it's going to be hard to remove bike lanes from the project.
Yeah, so, and, and, and folks, I just, I understand everybody's frustration hearing, but again, what we're talking about, and just a reminder, State Street is a state road, correct? Okay, so we have, we have a city. We're in the city Harrisburg, they're doing construction on the state road. We have to get the state input to, in order for us to be able to move forward with those things. We're also, the funding that was used for this project, and could you tell me the amount of funding, again, that we have directed towards this project? Anyone can?
About a million dollars.
A million for that? So, again, those, those funds came from PNDOT, correct? That, we're not, how much, if any, is state, is city money? What was the match?
Little, little under fifty percent, city.
Okay. Okay, but in order for us to Okay, but in order for us to access the state funds, we have to go along with what's in the state grant agreement. Which includes bike lanes as a part of any funding that we're going to get from the state. So, state road, you have to get state input in order to do any improvements to the road. If we take state money to do funding for the road, we have to go along with their funds. Can, is there any way, and I don't know if legal can answer this, that we could use all city money to do a state road? Do work on a state road?
I can't give you a definitive answer. What I know is that if we don't meet our obligations to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, because it's a match, it's not just the cost of the contract, it's the cost of the contract plus returning funds, reimbursing funds. So it suddenly becomes much more expensive to move forward. I will note, a number of the subcontractors literally already have the materials and items on their shelves that they purchased on their credit. And their question is, since we paid for these, how are you guys going to make this right? Because the contract was stopped after it was started, and they got in line.
Madam Chair, I have an objection, Madam Chair. My apologies. I just want to keep in mind that we are talking about human beings. I understand you're talking about materials and a lot of that, but we're talking about human beings.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please no shouting from the audience. And, go ahead, Council Major. We, public comment will happen after we have to conclude with the hearing. Well, everybody to speak.
Yeah, and, and again, ma'am, ma'am, I understand your concerns. I'm not trying to, again, I'm just trying to get facts out there right now, because again, these are projects that are going to impact everybody. And I don't want to take up a lot of time. I would do want to get to public comment, but I know there are a lot of things in terms of the funding and how these projects can move forward, that we need to make sure. We all are talking on the same level as we move forward on this. So with that, I know there's other members that have questions. I have plenty of others, but I will, I will defer my questions and allow it to go, so we can get to the public comment.
No, no. Wait till, ma'am, after public comment. Once we reach public comment, no shouting from the audience. Wait until the hearing is finished. Council, right now, is trying to learn how we can address the concerns of the community. But when you shout from the audience and distract the presenters, it makes us difficult to learn what we need to do to address your concerns. So please, let us finish and conclude with the hearing. We will hear what you have to say. Thank you.
And just lastly, for the city, working with you all. So how many meetings are you looking to do within that thirty-day period? That's my question. And how, and, and not just there, are there going to be an option for people to potentially write in their comments as well? Because we're on a pause, and though folks want to get back to, to doing work, and we need to potentially get new designs. That thirty-day window, it's just this work going to be going, but what does that public comment look like outside of? So the meetings, you don't have time to date yet, can work with the city to get those? And how are we going to communicate that, not just to, how are we going to communicate that to those direct residents that are on State Street? And those, State Street and roads near that, so that they can be made aware and participate in those meetings?
So at this point, we don't have a plan for that?
I'll stop you there. At least, at least the plan should be, can you get individual mailings, if not drop off to every resident along the impacted streets? And does it be immediately adjacent side trees, so they know when those meetings are? Sorry, Mr. Maisel, that's, and communicated on all of our social media, at least that point, a plan to make sure that the residents directly impacted, get a handout get a handout of some sort or a mailing so they know when to show up to those meetings. I know, I'm glad we have a communications director. So if you want to speak real quick, feel free, but I know other folks have, may have other questions.
Sure, and I just want to answer that question real quick because it's an excellent point. Matt Maisel, Director of Communications. We will get to work on this tonight on making sure that we figure out how many meetings are going to be. And for people who cannot attend those meetings, how they can get those questions to me. And I can make sure personally that those questions are delivered to those meetings. This is incredibly important. And as Mr. Bullock said earlier, the fact that there are so many people out here today is wonderful. We want to hear this input. This is drastically important. So it is a personal point of order in my office moving forward that any questions and concerns about the State Street project moving forward, anyone that cannot make it to those meetings, we will make sure that those questions and concerns are heard.
Thank you for that. President Bowers?
Thank you. Good evening. So I was just sitting here sort of doing my own personal timeline and trying to make sense of this. But Mr. Bullock, before I begin my line of questioning, can you please go back to the slide that notes the phase one priorities, please? Oh, I think that's, no, no, the second one was, if you can make that larger. This one, thank you. Okay. So you noted that this construction began on April the 4th. So that's, we're almost approaching a month as of tomorrow. The timeline isn't clear because we don't have Kinsley Construction present. Is that correct? Okay, so my first thought is during these discussions, if Kinsley Construction can be present or representative, I think that will be helpful in gaining a better understanding of the timeline that we're looking at. Because right now, tomorrow it's a month and people are still clueless. So that's one thing. Number one, Vision Zero. We talked about Vice President Green mentioned the overall Vision Zero, Vision Zero. The previous city engineer, it seemed like Vision Zero was his baby. So I'd like to know with Dowood as our current engineering service that we've contracted with through the end of the year, how do you plan to maintain Vision Zero? I want to ensure that since we don't have a city engineer on staff, that there will be no lapse in any part of that plan. Because as you've heard, we're very vocal and concerned about public safety for our residents. It's our number one priority. So how will you maintain wherever Mr. Martin left off to ensure that this plan continues to move forward without any rush or any lapse in the entire Vision Zero?
Yeah, thank you for that. So we're here to serve you. So your priorities become our priorities. So we want to pick up right where Wayne left off. So I know the Vision Zero Action Plan had it clearly stated, there were about 10 projects that were in various states. I know the East West Multimodal Project is designed, it's approved. That can be put out for bid, that can be next. And just keep that train rolling on all those projects.
Okay, so we will not lose any momentum there. Okay, thank you. Next, maintain the present on-street parking and access for physically disabled. So you mentioned, I thought you mentioned the number of parking spaces that would be impacted. But maybe I missed that in my notes. Did you or did you not?
Neither one of us did.
You didn't? Okay, so how many parking spaces, on-street spaces will be impacted by?
I don't know the exact number of that. No, I do not. But, but in the, one of the concerns of the future plan is that itself to reduce and not have the old plan in here, which took out the parking that was of interest. Okay, so our interest right now in the future designs is to make sure that parking is put back in place. So right now, I can currently say to you, we're not removing parking to the most part. We're not going to move parking. Okay, if the percentage was last time 75%, we're going to reduce it back down to which only like 20%. That's because of bus stops, that's because of ADA ramps, you need space and safety of that and stall. Those are things we're interested in. But the way I see the street, I come down, there's a whole lot of empty spaces as it is. So this helps, I see a lot, I'm not talking about 100, I'm talking maybe like 10. Okay, so it allows us that variance space to adjust.
Okay, well, maybe this is a better question.
Okay.
How will the 1988 ramps impact parking on State Street?
Well, they take about 20 to 40 feet on each side, depending on which street we're talking about. If it's 17th Street, substantial amount, you know, something like that, because of schools around the area. That, that's about it. And a lot of, and those are also safety areas too, where people would have on-site distance, look right and left a turn. So those are normals. That's not change, it's not a big change at all. That's a normal viewpoint. Up to a corner, you don't see a parking there.
Okay. Next, provide for vehicle drop offs at the schools between 16th and 17th Street. So I think you just sort of alluded to that.
Important issue, and I have seen that. And I'd be pretty surprised if somebody objects to that. We have four schools in that area. And that's an important thing to me. I've chosen as well, and I've seen my own two eyes several times, where kids almost got hit. And we need to make sure we provide enough substantial space for people to be dropped off in a nice, safe manner. So you can let the kids off and pull off back into traffic as well. So we're trying our best to address that.
Okay. And lastly is accommodate bike travel along State Street, which I think was addressed through Councilman Major's line of questioning. I'm still not very clear on the working sessions, as you called them, or community meetings that are going to be held. Mr. Maisel, I think it would be very important since State Street not only impacts the residents that live there, but everyone travels along State Street within the city to get to from point A to point B. So I think my recommendation in terms of a communication standpoint would be to broadcast these meetings on all of the channels as if you do with everything else on YouTube, on Facebook if necessary, on Channel 20. That way everyone is receiving the same information at the same time. Another recommendation that I would have, I participated in one of the community meetings for the two-way conversion of Second Street. And so at those meetings, I found them to be very productive because they had long sheets. And it was basically the layout of Second Street. And they noted like, this is where the bike lanes want to go. And they had them spread out on long tables. And every single person that was there could write their comments like, ah, I don't like where this is to the left. Maybe you should move it over here to the right. Or no, I don't like this at all. I don't think it's a good idea. Or no, did you realize that this is my driveway right here? And you're going to be impacting how I get in and out of my house. So I would recommend when you look to host these work sessions or community meetings, whatever you're calling them, that you really have an action plan and make them active meetings. So you can have your PowerPoint. I would suggest that you share exactly where you are in this timeline. So everyone again is clear on where we are and what's happening. So we don't go a month with, with no communication or interaction or things are happening. And some residents know what's going on, others don't. I don't think that's fair. So I would encourage you to have something of another PowerPoint, something in writing, something tangible that people can walk away with. But also leave time for that action. Because I think that that was a very productive process. And then the engineers, the firm, they went around, they were talking to each table. So it just made the experience a little bit more personable. Instead of you just coming down and this is what it is, no parking, this bike lane. It's just too much to digest at one time, honestly. So I think if we work together to schedule, make sure that these meetings are scheduled in a timely manner, be mindful of people's schedules. I think that meeting was well after a workday. So it wasn't, it wouldn't interfere with work. And it was like two hours long. But again, it really was an actionable meeting that I think was productive in the end. The residents had a clear understanding of where the project was, how it incorporated Vision Zero. That was a big part of it. And then they really got to literally add their input to the street that they, they live on or live near. So those would be my recommendations. And again, please have someone from Kinsley Construction present to clarify the timeline pieces. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Green?
Thank you. I have a couple of things kind of to piggyback off of what President Bauer said, and then a couple of other questions. So as far as these community input workshop session meetings, are they planned on being held before you start the designs? Or after you start the designs or before and after? So I think that's very important. If you just hold meetings beforehand and you go draw what you want to draw anyway, or you know, you go draw what you think people want, and then you implement it and it's not what they want. And they never get a chance to have that, that. And I don't want us to get caught up in this two to three month timeline and try to rush through the project. So then it's like, oh, we had some meetings, we heard what they said, and then we went and drew it out and we're back to construction. And you can't say we didn't listen.
Right, I think again, Wes stated that we're looking at two to three options. So we want to bring options to the table for that first meeting. Get feedback, absorb those comments, and then come up with a preferred alternative. Right, so gather input, narrow down, one of the three may be thrown out right away. Come down, maybe two options at that point, come to a second meeting with the goal of getting to that preferred alternate. Now that has to get approved by PennDOT because again, it is a state-owned highway. We will need a highway occupancy permit to do any work, whether it's a complete city-funded project or if there's state funding involved, PennDOT has to sign off on it too. So that normally is a timeless process. And that's why the original design took in 2018 to 2022 to get to where it is today. So we're trying to cram a lot of approvals, a lot of community input, a lot of design work into a very short one. We have to keep that in mind as well. So in terms of how many options and what we would bring to the table, the first meeting is probably going to be two to three different options. We'll take the best from each and hopefully get to one that everybody likes.
All right, my question then is you come up with, you get the community input from the two or three options that you present. You create a preferred alternative. Who chooses that preferred, like do you create the preferred alternative and then just go straight to PennDOT? Or do you come back to the community?
Back to the community.
Okay, and then collecting more input. It has to be clear, you guys are shaking your heads, but you know, if it's not laid out specifically, steps get skipped. And it's like, no, we said we were going to create the alternative. So then it will be coming back to the people and having a meeting on the preferred alternative and getting more comments before going.
Find that, it'd be great to have council sign off on it too. That we can go to PennDOT, that this is the council approved alternate that we want to go forward with. And that will likely have comments on it too.
Okay, all right, so, all right, I get that process. So now let's talk about locations of the meeting. It's very important to have the meetings in a location that is accessible to the people that are affected. It's also important to have it in a place that they can hear. The street corner on State Street is not a good place for a meeting, which I know was held at before. You can't hear what's being said. There is no space for a PowerPoint presentation. You can't even lay out a piece of paper without it blowing away. So it's important maybe to look at the school district building right there on State Street and asking if you can use their alternative to where they have their school board meetings at. Or even talking to the charter school or one of the churches there on State Street so that people have the opportunity to get their input. It's right there within walking distance. If you want to, you know, do construction on that street, it's important maybe to have a meeting on that street so that they can get that input. Once again, like Council President said, making sure you're paying attention to the times of the meetings and everything like that. Making sure the meetings are virtual so that people have the opportunity to listen to it or even participate in it if they can't be there physically, I think is also very important. Giving a chance for people to submit written comments, whether they're in person or online, I think is very important just to create the accessibility, just because we are where we are now, right? We're not talking about five years ago, we're talking about right now. So you have a lot of people that are really concerned and would like to be able to give their input. So it's important for us to field all input from every avenue that we can. Let me see. Talked about bike lanes. All right, so Councilman Rodriguez brought up a good point that we're talking about people's lives. But I think it's also important to understand the background of how we got here. We got here because of people's lives being taken. We got here because of how many deaths occurred on State Street. We got here because it's a how many lane road going across the middle of the city. It's ridiculously large. It's not really necessary to have that much traffic. And understand that we're thinking about people commuting in and out of the city. But it's important to think about the people living in the city, thinking about their safety, thinking about their livelihood. It's also important to think about their comfort, you know, to take all the parking away from me. If you came on my street and said you're taking on my parking, I'm going to have something to say. I mean, people have arguments with their neighbors over parking. And I mean, I think parking is something that we hear a lot in the city, right? Every time a new project comes, we're asking about parking. Anytime it's a street vacation or anything, we're asking about how is parking going to be affected? So it only makes sense that we're talking about parking when we're talking about redoing the street. So just for future reference, anytime you do a project in a city, think about parking because it's going to come up one way or another. So that's kind of something we can do to hit things off. As we're going through this project, it's also important for us to gather all the information, understand the entire complexity of the road, was it being a state road? Was it being state funding tied in? Will there be an obligation for bike lanes to be in it? Let's also discuss what bike lanes mean. Bike lanes could be something painted on the street. Bike lanes could be something that create a physical barrier such as concrete blocks so that bikes can't be hit by cars as easily. Bike lanes could be created by those little white sticky thingies that we put up on her street. I don't have no idea what they're called, I call them my sticky thing. They could be created by delineators. So let's talk about what bike lanes are, how we're going to use them, how the residents would like to see them in their community. Because we talk about bike lanes and most people just think like the little paint on the road that says a bike lane. And you think about people getting hit by a car because they're flying down State Street and this little line on the road does not want to mean anything to them when they're trying to get to work or when they're trying to drop their kids off to school. And so they'll go around you to the left or the right. So let's think about this as we're discussing it, not just like speaking in terms that we think everyone's supposed to understand. Because if you say to me a bike lane, I'm thinking the paint on the ground, I'm not thinking about all the other options. And actually, it was a conversation with the solicitor last week when he was talking about some of the physical barriers that kind of had already been purchased for the bike lanes. And I'm like, oh, so it wasn't just going to be paint on the road? But that's not something that was really discussed, right? These aren't things that we're talking about in public. So how can we expect people to know what's going on if we're not talking about it in public? And having those conversations until after the ground's broken. And then it's like, hey, be thankful that we're stopping this project because it doesn't happen often. No, if you would have asked these questions, had this conversation and made the information available beforehand, there's no need to be thankful, you should be thanking us that we're even looking at moving forward. You know, like, so we have to understand that we work for the residents, right? They don't, they don't have to take whatever we say goes on. And so it's important to have these conversations and open up the conversations with the residents and have that full circle and full cycle information session. And you know, we could go back and say we had that conversation five years ago. But we were talking about it on a much larger scale. So we need to make sure that when we come to these micro level projects, we have these micro level conversations the same way we do it in other neighborhoods, that we do it in all neighborhoods and making sure we're treating all residents of the city equally, not just based off of.
Thank you for that. Brawls. Brain fart.
Good evening, everyone. Before, I just really have a comment, but before I go, I had a few residents who they didn't get your names. If you could say your names and what you do, they didn't, they came in later, they didn't hear you.
I'm the interim city director for Engineering Department. My name is Percy Bullock, as well as a project manager.
My name is Wes Heisley. I am a civil engineer, project manager for the city of Harrisburg. I'm pretty much the guy Percy goes to whenever he needs technical expertise.
Okay, Chad Decker, Dowood Engineering, Vice President for Dowood. My personal passion is safety. So I'm excited about this project. I think it's a clean slate. I really do. The project was stopped. It is unprecedented, but.
The project was stopped. It is unprecedented, but I think what we have to keep in mind, there's 76 feet of width. So it's like a blank canvas.
Well, please, hey, please.
Right. It's a blank slate in terms of what we can do, okay? I think bike lanes are a good thing. And bike lanes do not come at the expense of pedestrian safety. So I think everybody's upset about pedestrian safety. In terms of our priorities, that becomes number one, right? Pedestrian safety is number one. Parking is right there. It's like 1A, 1B. The vehicles go way too fast. I think we all agree on that. So right now, there are three, there's five 12 feet wide lanes. We can come up with a solution that narrows that down to three lanes. We need one lane per direction. We need a center turn lane that become dedicated left turn lanes at each intersection. That's only 32 feet, okay? There is still half the roadway. We can keep every parking space that's out there. I know the the previous plan kind of floated parking off the curb. Keep in mind, that was a rapid reaction project. Everything that was proposed was done in such a way, they could take it back. There were no permanent concrete islands built. I believe there were like parking stops in the street. Personally, very surprised PennDOT approved that because in the winter time, they're going to get hit by plows, right? So we want to come up with a design that's maintainable, right? That's easy to construct, that's low maintenance going forward and focuses on safety. So the best way to keep parking safe is keep it on the curb lines. So I think what we come up with in terms of various options is going to keep parking on the curb lines. And that's only about eight feet for parking. We still have about 20 feet to play with. So we can do separated bike lanes with buffers on each side, right? Whether it's separated by paint, other enhanced markings, flexible posts like we had talked about, other visual deterrents to keep speeds down. Any design that we come up with as a group, because we're all in this together, we have to lower speeds, right? Because speeds, speed kills. That's what they say.
I, I agree with you when you said that the pedestrians were number one in their safety. But before that, it has to be the residents' voices and that wasn't number one. And that's where the issue came in. It was almost like it was dragged from under them and it was, here you go, take it. It is what it is. Their voices weren't able to be heard in meetings. They weren't able to be heard in public settings. That is what got lost. So I think we can all agree that State Street is an unsafe street. It's been for years and no one's done anything about it. And now we want to do something about it, which is fine. I think we can all applaud us on that. But the residents have to have their voices heard and what they need, what they see. Don't take this from me. Don't do that. Like, we have to make sure that we understand what their needs and wants are. So when we have, we have 30 days, you said, to to have meetings. So I don't want to rush. I don't want it to be, well, you weren't there, so that's it. These are the meetings. I feel like this project can be good for the city, but it has to be in a timely fashion where no one has been rushed to come to a decision, just like they did on Second Street. It needs to be done on State Street because those residents are just as important as the ones in Midtown are. So. Yes, I'm sorry. I just.
Matt Maisel, Director of Communications.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Maisel. I just wanted to point that I had made a good point about the pedestrians. I apologize for that. So I just, you know, as I was saying, moving forward also with some recommendations, just making sure that, like President Bauer says, it's interactive, interactive and that the residents are able to explain some of their needs and wants, blueprints. I'm a visual person, which I'm sure a lot of people, I was looking to see if there was any visual on what it was going to look like. Because I think you would get more of a buy-in. The residents aren't brought into this because they weren't brought into this. So there's no buy-in to it. So it's like, if you can show me what this is going to look like, how is this going to benefit my life? How is this going to work for me and my kids? Then they're able to say, okay, okay, now I get this. Oh, hey, you worked with me. I know you, you came into my neighborhood. You spoke with me, but when you just do things and they're not a part of it, I know you are kind of came onto it new, was here before you. So I won't put it all on you, but let's start over. Let's move forward in a better way and say, now let's do this. Let's make it better for them and for all of us. So that would be, you know, my recommendation. Let's just start all over. And I think that we can come to a better endpoint because now we're going to hear them.
Thank you, Matt. Are there any other questions?
I just wanted to make a statement. As I, as I listened to the overall conversation and just the roles of the individuals we speak to, when I think of a project manager and the severity of the situation, especially coming in front of council, I would expect or I would hope that when we ask simple questions like, what's the timeline? What's the proposed budget, et cetera? You guys would be able to deliver that on key every time instead of kind of keeping us like, because we can't help you help the citizens. We don't have the facts or information as well. Then also with that, it is something interesting that your colleague said, Wes, that the plan was done in such a form that it wasn't concrete. It can be taken away and adjusted. I think the residents deserve more of a concrete plan that they can rest assured and go to sleep at night knowing the way they accepted it or the way they approved it is going to get done and couldn't just get swept away or taken away at any given time. I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
That's a good point. And I think to respond to that, we weren't involved in that, okay? Previous engineering firms and.
Absolutely. But we did bring up when we guys hired you, it was to be fair.
Oh, yeah.
Please do your due diligence in the city. We are a very different city. We're not a monolith as most would like to believe. Every 22 of the individual areas in our city live and breathe differently. And we encourage you guys to please do your homework and do your due diligence so issues like this don't arise.
President Bauer?
Thank you. I guess just one final comment, Mr. Bullock, before you begin. I'm really still trying to figure out where you saw this vacant parking on State Street. Like, I'm really still trying to figure that out because I, I don't know. But, but in all seriousness, like, moving forward, even if it's to announce, even if it's to announce the public community meetings, please come back. Like, we have a captivating audience this evening and I'm so happy that everyone came out to voice your questions, concerns, so we can hear you. But even if it's to announce every step of the way, you're, you're more than welcome to come back. We will add you to the agendas until everybody is clear on what's going on. So I just wanted to extend that invitation.
Thank you. Just have one final comment. Reason why the timeline is off, because you've got to understand, this is something foreign to us as a city. It's a cease and desist order. Stop. So we're still in the infancy stages of trying to figure out what to do. You know, this was something just dropped on us. We had to stop because the residents, as you see, spoke up and it just slammed, stop. So we got to figure out how to get around a dam. You know, we created a worse situation than actually is. So that's why we don't have anything in concrete. We, you know, that, that is the answer to it. So that's why we're still in there hammering it. These days may extend from 30 to 45, you know? So we need that opportunity to figure it out, come back to table with the residents with us and dial these things out. That's why there's no, you know, factual timeline.
Okay, well, we expect one, once you have had time to digest everything and to consult with the residents. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Being none? Oh, I'm sure there's plenty of comments. We'll get to that in just a moment. But that concludes the Public Works Committee and I will pass it on to President Bauer. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Matson. So now, everyone, we will begin our public comment. So just, I'll just review the way we normally do it. So I'll go through each section and if you could please state your name and address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your direct address, you can just say State Street or in the vicinity. You will have two minutes. We have a lot of people here this evening who I'm sure everyone has a comment and we will listen and wait for everyone to be heard. But please be mindful of the two minutes. So please try to keep your comments concise but thoughtful and then we'll just keep moving forward, okay? All right. So I'm going to begin to my far right with the section directly next to Councilwoman Ross. Is there anyone who would like to offer a public comment? Okay. So everyone that raised their hand, I can't see you, but if you could please make your way to the mic. Please make sure that it's on. There's a little button. Okay, it's on, it's ready for you.
Good evening, everyone. My name, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Jamir Isom and I am 1843 State Street. My first concern was the bike lane. I don't see anybody riding a bike up or down it. So I don't understand why it has to be. That's number one. Two, there's no parking for residents. So for you to take parking away or limit parking for a bike lane, I don't see the correlation. So, three, when you put the bike lanes in, my concern is bike lanes. When you put the bike lanes in, you're going to create more havoc to already hazardous situations. I live right at 19th and State. There are accidents there on the daily. So where's the bike people going to be at? They're going to be flying in the air, okay? And that's pedestrian safety. So when you want to incorporate a bike lane, you have to understand first that there are so many other components coming into State Street. State Street just don't run down the street. There are people coming into State Street all different kinds of ways. And then you got this bike lane. And how are the people going to see the people on the bike? Yes, you can have the lane, but how are they going to see the people on the bike? Because sometimes you go up to 19th Street and can't even see cars coming. So how are you going to see a person on a bike coming? They probably won't wear proper clothing to reflect that they on the, on the bike. So now you're at, okay, now we're at summertime. So eight o'clock at night, someone's riding up the street. If no reflectors on, no light on the bike and collision. So it's not just about the daytime. And then I heard, I don't know if it's true or not, that they went to the people coming down State Street. Those people have to move their cars at a certain time of the day for. No one, no one knew about the signs, but you have this side of the street moving their vehicle from six in the morning to 11 in the afternoon. Where are they supposed to park at? I don't know because there's nowhere to park. Residents on the street don't even have anywhere to park. So now you have a five hour window where people are supposed to park where? For somebody on a bike? Do they pay taxes? You know, it's, it's, it comes to where are the, and then coming up. Now this side of the street has to vacate so that the people on the bike can come up? That makes no sense to me. It makes no sense. What I want to also say is I really would like to engage. I didn't know anything about this. I'm hearing everything from what this person said, what this person said and whatever, whatever. I came out to get in my vehicle and saw the sign right behind my car. Do you understand what I'm saying? No one said anything. So I asked the person that put the sign there. I said, does this mean that I can't park here at all? He said, oh, no, just on Tuesday and Thursday. I said, okay, so on Tuesday, second, second Tuesday and fourth Tuesday. Now where am I supposed to park at? This is a street cleaning sign. So now where am I supposed to park at the second and fourth Thursday? So my concern is, I understand this was 1988, I mean, Vision Zero. And 2018, we had the little pandemic. So I, I get all of that. I understand. But we were never included, period. It's like Reservoir Park. That's a prime example of people just doing what they want in the city without any of the community involved. And you have a, a war museum sitting up there that doesn't even get used. Who wanted that? Who wanted it? When I come home, I work overnight. So when I come home Saturday morning from work, there are people using the green belt on the bicycles. They're, they are three and four across. They're not one and two in the bike lane that you already have all night. What is that, 20th Street? Beside the, the laundromat, 21st Street? Okay, they're, they're all the way across the street. They're not in the bike lane that's already put there. So now I'm coming up the street. Sometimes it's dark outside, sometimes it's light. And I'm like, oh, wow. You know, they got their helmets on, but they have no lights. No one has lights. No one has reflectors. And they, they do their green belt all summer long. That's fine. But they also have to, they also have to do safety as well. They cannot just, I'm, I'm, all I'm saying is bike lanes on State Street, I don't know if they're needed. I understand people want us to be a big metropolitan state and this and that. That's not what we are. So keep it, keep it to the community that, that, that wants to ride a bike. I don't see bikes coming up and down State Street. So what are you putting a bike lane there for?
Thank you. Thank you.
Aaron Murray. I'm originally from the State Street area. I live out the south now. I drive to work every day for the last 15 years across the state. I find it strange that we don't have these same azotines in Timbuktu. Timbuktu becomes, it's the same road to State Street. But for some reason, when they get to Harrisburg, they speed up and make it their own personal winter station. I think for real, for real, that's the real issue with State Street.
Okay, thank you. You ran to two minutes. Anyone else in the far right section? Okay.
Hello. All right. I'm Arsenio Humphrey, for the record. I live on 19 North 19th Street. My concern is, I heard everybody talking, but there's one issue that was, was then brought up, especially with some residents that live on State Street. I know from like previous experience that the police officers, they will go out early in the morning and just yell over loudspeaker, like, yo, move your cars, told. It's going straight to dawn. So with that being said, as far as Kinsley telling to do phase one for communication, are those residents going to get compensated for their towing fees as far as dawns? Because they're making millions.
Thank you. Anyone else to the far right? Anyone else in this section? I just want to make sure I didn't miss anyone. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move to the section in front of the projector.
My name is John Stewart. I live at 1820 State Street. I'm 84 years old. I grew up where the Jackson League Apartments is right now. And I've seen all the constructions and going on, going on in Harrisburg. And every time, every time politicians want to stick you in the side, they talk about safety. If you really want safety on State Street, like the previous guy said. Uh, if you really want safety on State Street, like the previous guy said, put up some, put up some speed signs and the police officers to, of, um, to enforce it. Pe- uh, police, police officers in Penbrook chase people all the way down to 13th Street, giving them tickets. And, and if you want a bike lane, if you want a bike lane, why don't you make the center, that center lane a bike lane for people going in the city in the morning and out the city in the evening? And leave those, those lanes and leave that, that parking where we have to move our cars twice a day? I mean, we got a lot of, we got some elderly people, myself included. And we, and we have other people that can't get up twice a day to move their cars. So people from the white neighborhoods can ride their bikes down through our neighborhood with the work. And like, and like the previous guy said, they go slow through, they go slow through Penbrook because they have 25 mile an hour signs up. And they don't have, they don't have one sign up from 20th Street all the way to the other end of the bridge. Now, they have police in that, in that neighborhood all the time for everything else. You, you don't need a policeman. You can, you can hire people to take, to take license plates to speed through. Or even better yet, since, uh, it's new technology, you can have cameras and bust them coming through. And how much money would that bring to the city? How much money would that bring to the city? And, and, and I, I mean, and this is what I heard since I've been here tonight. The PennDOT has authority for what we do. We have contractors that already bought stuff for what they gonna do. Now, this first meeting with the public that these guys are talking about, is PennDOT gonna be invited? They hear what we have to say. Not, "We decided upon this, what we gonna do," and PennDOT said, "Uh-uh." So what's the point? That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John's neighbor, he more or less had, you know, said what I wanted to say. So I just wanted to understand, as far as the enforcement. The problem with public safety there, as pedestrians get hit, is because of speed. But why is there no enforcement? Putting lines so the police could be there, climbing people, but not even being used? What was the purpose? I would like to un-understand why there's no enforcement by city police, whoever needs to do it.
Thank you. Thanks.
How you doing? Uh, my name is Timothy White. I, um, live on State Street, 1715 State Street, and I work on State Street, 1735 State Street. And most of my issues have already been addressed, like the, the, the meeting's coming soon, that's important. But the, the ruckus was, we weren't notified in time. And...
Tell you, I do not work. So I'm home all day, every day, I didn't get no notice for anything. The only notice I got was the one she posted on the vehicles that are at our doors. And that was the coming today. This is the first time we've heard of this. And I'mma tell you, I'm a very nosy neighbor, I'm in everybody's business, and there's three cameras on my porch. I know who's coming up and down the street, and I can tell you, it's not that many bicycles. Okay?
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Robert Lawson, I live, um, at Second and Division Street. And I'm not directly affected by what's, what's happening on State Street, so I won't speak to that. But I will speak to what I'm hearing now from some of the residents, and this is probably more on the city's side of this. In my neighborhood, we had those signs pop up as well. None of, I, at Second and Division, none of my neighbors moved their cars. And I never heard a co- a cop come by with a bullhorn saying that they're gonna tow us, and I know that their cars were never towed. So when we're, when we're, right, and they won't, so we're looking at some of the residents here on State Street. Even if we're gonna go through everything and we, let's say that the momentum has to happen, and it's gonna happen. As, as, uh, Councilman Rod Regis said, these are, these are people, and they have to be treated as, as people. So when, when the next round comes around and we say, "We have to move your cars," like they're saying, give them some notice. And, and if, and if the people haven't had a chance to move it, treat them with respect and say, "Okay, well, we're gonna work with you because just pulling, like, you're on vacation, and they're towing your cars away on vacation, and then you have these fees that, that are gonna come, like the storage fees, and, and if you don't get the money to, to pay the storage, they'll sell your car." So that, that's the only comment that I have on it. It's just on our aspect of it, when we do start moving this forward, and really take the residents into consideration.
Thank you. Sure, please.
That might be an hour of the day. The rest of the time, it's parking. Blocks away from the house. 19th Street and State. Yeah, so. I just wanted to thank you, all y'all, for this.
Thank you. Anyone else in the section in front of the projector screen? Okay? Seeing no one, anyone in the middle? Okay, thank you.
Okay, my name is Lisa Jenkins, and I live at 1350 State Street. Long story short, I was a part of Vision Zero, um, with Mr. Martin because of what had happened on State Street. My son had got hit, hit and run, left dead in the street. Thank God he made it. One of my neighbors didn't make it, named Cynthia. And that's when I got really concerned, and I start calling into the mayor and got on Vision Zero. When we were going over plans, my plan was not about bike lanes or anything. It was about safety of the people, okay? Uh, the people is what mattered to me. My son's arm got screwed, bolts all in his arms. My neighbor didn't make it, lots of other people on State Street didn't make it or had gotten hit. It's very dangerous. My concern was slowing the traffic down. My concern, I worked on the committee with Mr. Martin, was slowing the traffic down. It was getting cameras to report some of this stuff coming through here. Um, it was lights, crosswalks, somewhere that we can cross safely. You go, if you look where, where the crosswalks are, they are all at, I guess, um, where the red lights are, and that's like a block. They're all spread it out. Um, it is a five-lane highway. Um, the crosswalks are all spread it out, so if I come out of my street at 1300 block, I gotta go up, I guess, to the 1400 block and to, just to use a crosswalk. That was my concern. Um, it was lots of things, the kids, when they're going to school, you got the crossing guards. No one follows the, the safety, 15 miles per hour for the kids. But when you go onto the other neighborhoods, that's followed. Okay, so that was my concern. That's why I joined, we did have meetings. I passed out stuff, we let everybody know, you know what was going on, come to the meeting. Uh, Mr. Martin, we had plans out. Everything we put together, got, they, they did away with it. They hang back and said it was PennDOT, was the state-owned street, okay? Uh, it was owned by PennDOT, so our plan was mostly for the safety. It was nothing about moving parking, it was mostly for the safety of the neighbors of our neighborhood. That was ours, the people that had been killed, the people that had been hit. Lots of times, it's not even, um, recorded or reported how many people have been hit on State Street. Okay, sometime they get hit and they might get up and walk away, or they go to hospital, but it's never reported. So that's, I was a part of Vision Zero. I had time, me and my sister, like the lady that passed out things. If we're older people, we had time to go through the neighborhoods, pass out stuff, so, but y'all don't have time to do that. Me and my sister did it alone, we walked for blocks, house to house, to say, "Hey, we wanna do something about the safety, we wanna do something about the residents." Um, we did that, um, we had meetings, um, I came to different meetings. We had different things going, but then when it came down to it, I never heard anything else. Um, I guess it was the project, PennDOT wasn't gonna support it. Uh, and I guess it was just taken, it was off the board. So then like the residents are saying, then one day we wake up and move your cars and we got signs up. But I'm not hearing a lot about the safety of the people. I would have been satisfied if you just painted the line for a safety. Just put some paint, "Hey, this is a crosswalk for us to pass over." That would have been okay for me. I'm not worried about a bike lane when people's lives are in jeopardy. My son was hit and left for dead. Only way, another car didn't hit him, a hit-and-run, was that someone stood over his body to protect him. Okay, State Street is a dangerous street. They go down there doing 55 like they're on a highway. So the most important thing is people's lives, I'm not worried about bike lanes. And let us, parking is very hard for us. Parking is hard, but you gotta respect who we are. Sometimes, you know, we don't have a driveway to pull up in, okay? We can't go into our homes and we pull up in a two, three-way driveway, and then you're making us move our cars, and you're putting up signs, okay? If it's not permanent, then why are they sealed into the ground? Oh, you can't park here this time of day. You know, you can't park here, and then you gotta move your cars two, three times a day, and it's already hard to park. It's not fair to us, we live in the city, we pay taxes, we should know what's going on. You're not gonna go nowhere else and not, um, give the people a chance to say, "Hey, this is what's going on, we're coming in and we're gonna do this." Just if it was gonna be done for the right and for the safety, that's what I was fighting for on Vision Zero, okay? For the safety of State Street, for the safety of all of the neighbors crossing, that we don't have to pull up another body that is dead or someone else that has been injured, left for dead by hit-and-run. So I take it very, very seriously. Very seriously, lives matter. Lives matter, we matter as people, as neighbors. You just can't come in and, and rip up and just do anything and, and, okay, if we can pass out flyers as older people, why wasn't something given to us? Like I said, it was knocked, I never heard nothing, they told me we canceled the project. So then a couple of years later, now all of a sudden, this thing is just happening, and nobody knows what's going on. So that's just everything that I had to say, and thank you all for listening to me.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosie Randolph, and I live in the 1600 block of State Street. And for years, we tried to get a light at 16th and State, because it's a very dangerous place to come out of, especially when cars are parked on the front, and you can't see what's coming from either way. And so many people have got killed there, and, um, no one seems to care. I'm not saying they don't, and I'm a little disappointed because it's no one sitting here making these decisions that live in our neighborhood and know what it's like to live in our neighborhood. And this restriction of parking certain hours of the day, I'm in my seventies, and I'm handicapped. I'm not getting up six o'clock in the morning to move my vehicle, and then have to go back again and bring it back and park it again in front of my house where I pay taxes. That's so unfair to us. People need to think about what they're doing before they do it. And they need to realize other people may not have your lifestyle. They may not have your convenience, as Ms. Lisa said. You don't have your convenience. I shouldn't have to park on Liberty Street to come around to State Street to get in my house. I shouldn't have to park on Liberty Street to come around to State Street to get in my house. That's unfair. And also, bike lanes, the only thing that's gonna happen, I have a hand that can park in front of my house and people parking. But the only thing that's gonna happen, if people kind of come to the parking area, is gonna drive into town with their bikes on their car and park in our parking space and ride across the bridge. If they're that scared in our neighborhood, then they need to work in their own neighborhood.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicole Chisholm. I live in the fifteen hundred block of State Street. I've been there for eighteen years, so I've seen it all. Sit on the porch, I've seen people get hit, I've seen cars crashing each other, the whole night. I'm just concerned about the limited parking. Because in my block, we have multiple families living in homes. We have, uh, rooming houses. We don't, I don't know where you saw an empty spot, it is literally parking wars. I start work at six AM, so that means I have to stop work to try to come out of my house to find a park just to go try to move it like on my lunch break, which is highly impossible. My son works at night, he does not get off of work until six thirty, seven AM. He doesn't have a park. When you guys were working on the street the last time and we had to move our cars, he had to park all the way close to her street after being up all night working. That's not fair to anybody. Then what happens when it snows? You're gonna park, dig out your parking spot, then you're gonna move, then somebody's gonna take your spot, then that's a fight. You know how people in the city are. So all these things need to be put into consideration before you all, you know, do what you do. And I have another question. So those signs that are up now, are they being enforced? Like, can we park there or will we get a fine? They're not being enforced as of yet?
Mr. Bellack, can you please speak into the mic?
No sign is being enforced. In fact, we did try our best to remove all. I will follow through personally tomorrow morning to see what sign has not been removed myself.
Okay, thank you, because like I said, my son gets off in the morning, there's no parks. He has to ride all around before he finds a park. It's just ridiculous. Thank you all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle?
And I would say there's really nothing wrong with the street. The enforcement, the lights. There's a street light outside my house. I'm the one who has to call every time it's out. I have thought about the lights up there in Restport Park. They're still out, they have been out for years. And whoever said they do fly down State Street, they're coming from Pembroke. It's not only the cars, it's the motorcycles. And then we get to running around the blocks, down to a certain spot seventeen, back up to Walnut, down State Street. And this'll go on all night. So we do need more enforcement, we need better lighting. And the parking, I'd say, you know, leave our parking alone. Now, when I go home tonight, I'll have to park around the block and walk around. No, it's not, there's a bar on the phone. And I have to listen to that. And the people up there in the park. So we need more enforcement and more lights. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment? Go ahead, please come to the mic.
My name is Sharon Schweitzer. I lived on State Street for twenty-five years. I saw one girl get hit. I'm a huge biking enthusiast. That I used to live in Chicago western suburbs before I moved to Harrisburg. And I would ride my bike to school, to work, to church, everywhere and had no car. And I would like to, I, I attempted to do that when I first moved to Harrisburg. I attempted to commute by bike along State Street. Problems I had is that the, 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 what, the, I went on the sidewalk. I would be absolutely terrified to take my bike on State Street, no matter the number of lanes or no matter what the posted speed limit would be in any kind of bike lane. And I'm imposed to that. That's what we have in Carlisle and we're always trying to dodge. When I go to work in Carlisle, I'm trying to be careful about going around bikers, it's horrible. And I would like to see bike lanes on the sidewalk with, um, bollards to keep people from the street from accidentally running off and hitting them. I don't think that would be a big problem, but, um, in, in other cities around the world where they don't have some kind of bollards, eventually you have some drivers who try to target pedestrians. They're bullies, they're, have different kind of political agendas and they target people that are, um, walking and riding bikes along the street. So I think some, I think that the bike lane should be on the sidewalk, on the side of the street. You could put a better sidewalk that's wide so you're not hitting pedestrians on both sides of State Street. And I think that would allow bike lanes without actually having bicyclers creating an unsafe situation on State Street in any kind of lane. And still get your bike lanes and your funding for the bike lanes without, um, creating an unsafe situation with bikers and the bikers would not be in anybody else's way. There's plenty of room on the one side of the street where they wouldn't hit any pedestrians walking. Another thing is, this girl that was hit in front of my house, the situation that happened was she was playing with a ball. Ball went out into the street and she went out to get the ball. She was like seven or something, she didn't have her head against her and she got hit. Well, we can say blame it on the parents. Any parent knows they can turn their head for one minute and something happens with the kid. That, there's a lot of, right on the seventeen hundred block, there's a lot of young children. They're all in front of the house, on their porches, playing with balls all the time. And there's a vacant lot with a lot of trash on it. I think it's about six twelve North Eighteenth Street. I think the city should buy that and put a little multi-use basketball, half court pickleball with a nice tall fence. So these children have some place to throw a ball around. And that these parents should be told, don't let your kid have a, hold a ball in their hand on State Street. You should be sent to this nice little park. And there's all kinds of parents on North Street where they'll sit on their porches and the children will be out in the middle of the street with their jump ropes and kickballs. And if they had a little place there off the street, they could move some of that for their skateboards or scooters, their balls. That would maybe help this problem that seems to be right around Seventeenth Street. Also, the charter school students don't have any place outside. They'll be all up in the alley there on the seventeen hundred, uh, Miller Street, playing with cats, walking around with cars swerving around them. If they could have a place where they could be off the street that would be safe and protected so they could throw a ball without it going onto the street, I think that would be good. Another thing is, I think that people are right about people going down State Street at high speeds and people still have to get across the street during rush hour. It's gonna take massive enforcement to get that speed down. And it may not even be possible to do. So, and instead of creating a median in the middle, I think you should create a tunnel. Hinsley Construction. On Seventeenth, going from the starter charter school on Seventeenth Street, under the street, have the crossing guards open it up when then the morning. Open the doors, so like homeless people and people aren't in there doing things they shouldn't. And I think all residents, you could have it rolling so you could get wheelchairs through there. People could come through on their motor, crosses on their motorized wheelchairs. You could take your bike across. You could cross over to the other side. Um, and that the holes where you, in the stairs where you come back will be way back on Seventeenth Street. So children aren't queuing right next to the street. You have children standing right next to State Street by the charter school looking like they're about ready to run across without anyone looking and sometimes they do. So if you could have them waiting for the crossing guard to go down under this tunnel further back, that would be good. And you could have loading zones right next to there so the parents can drop them off there.
Thanks so much. I think that your vivid, uh, design will be great for the, uh, public meetings and hopefully, um, our engineers are taking notes. So thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer a public comment? Don't want to miss anyone. Seeing no one? Anyone to my left? Okay, please come to the mic. Oh, you're welcome, thank you for coming.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Lloyd, I live in seventeen twelve State Street. So I live right on the corner of Seventeenth and State, the worst intersection on State Street. I have three kids. I have one that's four, he's autistic. He is a runner. I have done everything I can in my home to protect him. But if he's out front where I have a gate and he's playing and stuff, I've seen the bikers fly straight up the sidewalk. I have a four-year-old autistic son and they're flying up the sidewalk beside him. That is not safe. Where was that ever okay to do? My, my six, my eight-year-old, he's been hit twice, walking to school at Premier on the corner where we live. That is not safe. He was hurt once, the other time it was just a bump, but either way, it shouldn't keep happening. When they come out of Pembroke, they're flying. There's nothing to stop them but a pedestrian. That's it, that's the only thing stopping them. Somebody walking across the street or somebody walking on the sidewalk and they're getting hit. That is not okay. That's not safe. I'm the only person on my block, like she said, that has three kids that play out front constantly. We don't have a backyard, we don't have anything. We have a front yard with a little bit of grass and then it's right there on by the street, so it's, they don't really have anywhere to play. My son has ran, run into the street once. He ran straight into the street with, getting a ball, my autistic son, and a car luckily stopped. But you have no idea how many bodies I have seen fly in that air right at that intersection. Those cameras at the intersection, they don't even work. I came through, uh, two thousand seventeen, that meeting on State Street, I was there and I voiced my opinion and nothing was changed. I, the only thing I specifically asked for was working cameras. Had those cameras been working, maybe the person who hit my son would have been dealt with. But because there's no working cameras there, nothing was done. That is a problem. The lights go out and they're out for weeks and weeks before they're fixed. That is a problem. There's multiple thing, I'm, to be honest, I don't really care about the bike lane, I don't. I don't care about that. I'm, I'm more scared for the pedestrians, my kids, that type of stuff. If there was speed bumps, speed signs, more lights, that could help a lot of the damage that's being done. But there's none of that. And like somebody just said, there is lights and crosswalks every two, three blocks. That's, that's, that's not fair. So I have to walk my son from three blocks to cross at the crosswalk? Oh, that's not fair. And with this parking thing, this is the weird thing. The signs weren't there, we wake up, I sit on my porch at eight o'clock in the morning. I'm on my porch, every single day. I watched them come and put all those signs up and down State Street. And I'm not gonna lie, I am one of the people that went on Concern Citizens of Harrisburg and complained and complained and complained. Couple hours later, everything was taken down. But not only did you guys take down the signs, you took down the street cleaning signs. You took down every sign, didn't put nothing up, wait, but street cleaning was Monday and Tuesday. Guess what they did? Started ticketing people. Why are we being ticketed and there's no signs? That is not fair. Y'all gotta make up y'all's mind, we cannot, it, it's not fair. It's not fair at all. We constantly, constantly, constantly fight for parking right there. I am in front of a church, a school district board, a daycare and a school, all in the same, right in the same place. I'm not gonna lie, I get extremely upset and I have complained to the school people, to the staff. Go park somewhere else. I live here, I shouldn't have to walk from Twentieth and State to get home with my three kids. No way is that fair. No way, there's nowhere to park. To be honest, when those signs were put down, I was gonna park on the sidewalk. The church does it, nobody says anything to them. The church people, they park on the sidewalk, the corner, your grass, nobody says nothing. Then there's one specific cop that is at that church every weekend. She sits on the corner and allows them to do whatever they want. No, they are citizens just like we are. If they cannot abide by the rules, then we shouldn't have to. They ha, they have to abide by the rules, it's not fair to pick and choose. It makes no sense, it's not fair. I don't agree with how you guys are trying to from Thirteenth the whole way up stop the parking. I'm not against the little construction thing, but if you guys are gonna do it, do it block by block so that we could find somewhere to park close and not have to park way up the street. If you, there's no way y'all's gonna be able to do from Thirteenth the whole way up within three weeks, a month, none of that. So what is the point of taking the strip, the parking from the whole strip? Do block by block if it's, if it's that serious, but taking the parking from everybody from Thirteenth and up? No way is that gonna work. That's gonna become a danger to the residents because we already fight for parking. We literally are all arguing constantly over the parking. Constantly, there's no parking over there at all. I have no idea where you saw any type of open space. I have no idea. I live on Seventeen twelve State Street, literally right on the corner. There's never no parking. I park at the fire hydrant and hope that I don't get a ticket. I have three kids and I have a runner. I'm not parking way down the street to get to my house, I'm not doing that. Well, I, I don't know if you guys could do block by block and do the speed bumps or, or speed signs, something, but to take the parking from seven AM to five PM, it's crazy. I'm a stay-at-home mom. I lost my kid's father two years ago to the street. I have three boys to myself and I'm home twenty-four seven. No way am I getting up to move my car, to walk back down the street, go in the house and then do it again, I'm not doing that. When we already have street cleaning every first and third Monday, I'm not doing that. I'm not doing that at all. There, there's gotta be another way that we can figure out this parking situation. And then, like I said, with the speed bumps and the signs, because it's too dangerous, they're flying through there, they're flying through Pembroke. And these bikers are horrible. I don't care if they want to be dangerous and ride on the street and get hit, that's not my problem, but stay off the sidewalk. I don't know what else to say. The sidewalk thing is ridiculous, they have no business on the sidewalk. To my knowledge, the bikers are supposed to abide by street laws, like, like the cars. I'm confused why they're even allowed on the sidewalk and nobody says anything about it. And then we're wrong because us as redit, residents are concerned, so we're speaking out and we're being called, oh, you're Karen. No, this is where I live, I've lived here for seven years. I've seen so much happen on that street. It's freaking, it's crazy, it's ridiculous, it's dangerous and a lot needs to be done. The bike lane, I don't think is safe. They fly out of Pembroke, we see too many bodies already. I just had to help a man the other night, he got smacked by a car. And I went over, I asked him, do you need me to call somebody? The lady's car was tore up. He was okay, don't know how, but he told me that it happens all the time and he was fine. I mean, for real, it, it was weird, but it just happened. Like I saw, I, I saw this man fly in the sky, like, that's dangerous. It, it has, there has to be something that can be done with these bikes and the speed.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the left section? Can you please? Yes, can you? Okay. Okay, thank you. It's okay, we just wanted you to speak into the mic.
Hello? I, I, I respect this meeting. I really think y'all should have this pretty often. You know, my name Ricky Banks. I got shot twenty-seven years ago. I deal with a lot of parents. I respect the lady said about the parking. And then another thing, can y'all please? I've been begging about twenty years now. Please light the city up, please. please light the city up, please. We need more lighting in the city of Harrisburg, and I'm blind. I hear so much going from these older people, it hurts me, 'cause people, last night, three people got hit. Two is in Hershey Melk Center right now. I will think that y'all will give more lighting in the city of Harrisburg. Thank you. That's all I wanna say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bala.
If they gonna, they plan the way they first. It's concerned. The bike lane next to her. And then we park on this side of the bike. Go to open our car door and not have a catch, because they're gonna hit. So I'm glad to know that they will switch that around. But in the meantime, where are we gonna park? We have nowhere to park. Here's a big open space on the corner of Thirteenth and State. They say that's for the state workers, we can't park there. But where are we supposed to park? If we go park on Liberty Street, oh, you can't park here, this is where I park my car. Or we try to park right on the corner where the nail shop is, the lady have us a ticket, because she said we can't park there, because that's for her business. So where are we supposed to park? There's no place for us to park. So I need to know, is there anywhere y'all budgeted, y'all can put a light on the corner of Fourteenth and State Street? That's where all the accidents happen. Right on the corner of Fourteenth and State. I can look out my window every other day, there's accidents, right there. Fourteenth and State leave the light both ways, coming down and going up, because that corner, the stop sign is back here. Actually have to pull out to the street. Just to see if oncoming traffic is coming. So that needs to be addressed. Not that needs to be immediate, because that's where all of the people get hurt, right there. Every other day is an accident. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in this left section that would like to offer? Before, before you begin your comments, Ms. Evelyn, I have to say thank you, because we shared the meeting date and time last week with you, and I, I personally asked you to share the information with your neighbors, and this room is, was full of people. So I'd just like to personally thank you for your effort in getting the word out and making sure that your neighbors knew exactly what was going on. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank my neighbors for coming. I want you to know, I haven't done this much walking since 2010, when I worked for the Census. And I don't ever plan to do that much walking again. We're gonna get a committee. I want y'all to pull this and read it. I pulled this from the computer today. It's the PennDOT report on crashes and statistics. It talks about the times, the causes of accidents. I can only get a 2020. I, I don't know if they didn't do the 2022 yet, but this is very interesting. We talk about State Street. We haven't talked at all about those people that are flying low and driving high. I hear about health issues. We've got a lot of people who do a lot of damage on State Street. Coming from Barrow in the evening. One evening, it was about one o'clock, one morning, about one o'clock. I thought I heard a train wreck. Here comes someone up State Street. It's four cars, totals them, and they turn, their car is turned upside down. Needless to say, they weren't hurt, because you know, when you've been drinking a lot of alcohol, your body goes the throw. So we have a problem with that. We need, if we can't get these people to slow down, what we need to do is force them to slow down. I don't care if they don't like it or not. If we have to have a traffic light at every block on State Street, we need to have it. Or we can put those things like when you come off of 283, going on to Eisenhower Boulevard, those yeah, those things. And we need to also look at when we have problems with lighting on State Street. You call and say, "There's a light that's out on State Street." It takes too long to get those lights fixed. I was out on Seventeenth and State the other night, and I noticed on Seventeenth and State, on the north side, it's very bright. But on Seventeenth and State, on the south side, it's not nearly as bright. We need to take and look at those issues. And when it comes to this bike lane, which I am very, 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 very much opposed to, who's gonna be in it? I wanna know, is this for regular bikes? Is this for motorized bikes? Is this for me and the scooter I don't have? That I'm looking into? Okay. Yeah, you know, I wanna know who's gonna be using this bike lane. We also need to deal with getting the trees trimmed on State Street annually. We need to encourage people not to jaywalk. We have a major problem, and I have been begging and begging for years, and have been told, "Forget it, Evelyn, you're not getting it." A traffic light at Nineteenth and State. At Nineteenth and State, if I were paid fee for service for the tickets I could give out on that intersection, I would have an income higher than the mayor's. Because at any given day, you're gonna find people parked up against the corners at trap, at stoplights, signs. We have people parked at, in front of hydrants. When I have going up Apricot Alley, I've had people complain to me that they can't see to go out Apricot Alley, 'cause it's parked too close to the entrance. In the evening, on Thursday, the city has been notified on them on number occasions that the trash trucks can't get out of Apricot Alley, because people are parked too close to the curbs. And at the last meeting, I heard a young man talk about 12 feet, 10 feet streets. I don't wanna hear it. I live on State Street. That is one of the few streets in Allison Hill where people aren't parked on curbs and sidewalks and in grass. And if you're still thinking about making State Street one lane going up and one lane going down, come visit me in my neighborhood, all of you. I'll walk you through the neighborhood, so you can see how we have to deal with, and this is a way of life. You've got FedEx, you've got Prime, you've got the mail people, you've got the Mills on Wheels people. You have numerous people stopping throughout the day to drop things off. Buses don't move in the bus lane, because it's too hard for them to get out. And, and I have this car now. It's a little bigger than what I'm used to. And it takes a while for me to park that car on State Street. So I think some people are gonna get a little upset, when they've gotta wait for me to get that car in, if it's not another lane for them to get into. And I think it's gonna be a public safety issue also, because with, you've seen the number of police, the number of ambulances and fire engines going up and down State Street. Where are these vehicles going to move out of the way so they can get up and down State Street? You're talking about public safety. This could end up resulting in someone's house burning a little faster, or someone dying, because our public safety people can't get to them. We need to put more traffic lights up, and so what? If people complained, if they would have driven snow slower, we wouldn't have had to put them up. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section?
My name is Melanie Cook. I currently live in the 3,000 block of North Third, but when my family first moved to Harrisburg, we lived on North Sixteenth Street, right off of State Street. I remember when State Street was the boulevard, where children and people could walk. There was a movie theater that residents could frequent. We could safely get to Reservoir Park, even as children. The people who have spoken this evening have come in and been very courteous, far more courteous, I might add, than my mother and some of the other people who I grew up around. This is a situation that should never have existed. There is no reason why someone who lives in this city, pays taxes in this city, has lived in the city for 50 years, 60 years, is waking up to bullhorns and police telling them to move their car. They are each and every one owed an apology, and a written apology from every person who is an elected official in this city, everyone who is on staff of this city who allowed this to happen. I was one of those people who stood on the corner of Seventeenth and State. I have been one of those people who have come in and asked the question repeatedly, "Why were there three indoor meetings, extensive discussions held when Second Street was going to be made two ways?" There were public announcements, there were weeks of advance notice. I stood on a street corner with the then-mayor, with Wayne Martin, and with this, the series of engineers who were paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to develop a project, and now apparently there's no record of what anybody said, anybody did, what was agreed to. I raised the question, we watched four-wheelers circling the neighborhood. We watched the children at Premier darting across the street. We have watched for years cars drive through the school safety zone, going triple the 15 mile per hour speed limit. I asked the mayor, "Where are the police? Why is there no presence here when these kids are getting out of school?" The response was, "Pat told me, I know as well as he does, how few police officers there are on the force." That is absolutely no excuse. There are more cameras at the corner, before you get to Pembroke, in front of Reservoir Park. You can probably see what someone's doing if they drop a penny. And yet, there is no camera between that point and until you get across the State Street Bridge. There is a zone where it would appear that neither PennDOT or anyone else cares what occurs. Cameras should be placed. Speed limit signs should be posted immediately. If you can immediately pay for, print, and post, don't park or move your car every three hours. You most assuredly, after years of people requesting it, can post speed limit signs, so it is very clear how much people are exceeding the speed limit on State Street. Because you can rest assured, they know they're exceeding it. As numerous people have pointed out, people poke their way through Pembroke and have no intention of exceeding the speed limit, because a police force that is probably a third of the Harrisburg Police Force is able to enforce their speed. We're here, and you do not see a law enforcement vehicle even attempting to deter the speed at which these people are coming into this city and out of this city. It is not just an ingress and an egress point for people getting to their state jobs. It is a neighborhood where people live. And from this minute forward, I expect, and I certainly hope the residents expect, that they are going to see a turnaround. We want a date by which there is going to be a first public meeting. We want to know where it is going to be, what time it's going to be. If it can be on a Saturday. We want to know who will be present. Without PennDOT, without the construction firm, we are basically talking to people who cannot necessarily address the concerns that people have. This is not just to stand and let them talk, and then we'll wait a month and proceed to do whatever we want. Because quite frankly, the city of Harrisburg should count itself lucky that it has not been sued. At one point, State Street was the most dangerous pedestrian crossway in the United States of America. And for anybody who has been on this council, who knows that's the case, and yet we are still looking at not a drop of paint, not changing the timing of the light, not adding more streetlights, no traffic enforcement whatsoever. The next person who gets killed ought to sue this city and every engineering firm who has had any hand in the supposed fix, along with PennDOT. So, again, different voice coming from me. You have heard people very patiently say to you, "We appreciate you listening." I personally think it's your job to listen. But more importantly than being your job to listen, it's your job to incorporate what you're hearing and come with solutions that are gonna address the concerns of the people whose tax dollars are paying for your services. And I do thank everyone who came, most particularly Ms. Hunt, who is a force to be reckoned with. She did not just come to the last meeting and stand. She was at the meeting prior to that and raised the issue. And she has been at meetings prior to that and raised the issue. This is how government works. She is what epitomizes democracy. So everybody should thank her, and really do extend our appreciation. And, and I didn't say this last week, she needs a parking space. She comes to more city council meetings, and I have to stand around to see whether, where she's parked, so she's not on Front Street, walking around the corner by herself. There needs to be a designated parking space for residents who want to come, address city council, who are of a certain age and who have certain physical limitations. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the left section?
William Johnson, and I live at 1935 Station. Think the variation that you're hearing, it's good to shrink the roads, but if you shrink the roads and drop the speed limit, but the people still keep speeding down the street, no good. So even though you put up there that the goal is to eliminate pedestrians getting killed, there's always gonna be an issue with that, because you don't have people that are enforcing what they need to enforce. That's probably the biggest issue that we're dealing with, along with crosswalks. You know, there, there is one other thing about that bike lane. I worked in DC for a while. I drove a bus. When I drove the bus in DC, you often had problems with bikers. Because what would happen would be, if you opened the door to let people off the bus, the bikers would keep coming. So they didn't, they didn't respect what the bike lane was supposed to be like. But if something happened to them, they were the first ones screaming, "Haber!" But if something happened to them, they were the first ones screaming in the harbor. Oh, there's a bike lane. And you're supposed to know that there's a bike lane. Great. But there are also road rules. So the next thing is, you're in your, you're in your car, parked, depending on where you put the bike lane at. You put, you open your door. And when you open the door, what are you gonna have? Bikers. Then what happens? So there's a lot of things that they're talking about doing. Sounds great. Really they do. But what they really start with is this is city's ability to slow people down.
Thank you.
My concern has been that, I live on, my name is Carmen Johnson. I live at nineteen thirty-five Station, and I've been living there for seven years. We bought, we bought an apartment complex and we have residents that live there. And within my complex alone, there's seven people that park because we have tenants. And we take up the whole block, pretty much. And four, three of those, of those tenants actually walk to work. So they leave their cars parked. So where are they gonna move their, how can they move their cars if they're at work? Second thing is that with regard to the speeding, one thing I've noticed is when I'm driving through Penbrook, that people put their brakes on because they see enforcement. They start speeding when they get to Twentieth down to Thirteenth Street because there is no enforcement. And so that's why there is so much speeding. So I just wanted to say that. Another reason why there's limited parking, there's a lot of apartment complexes. So there's like, what? One building may have four to eight tenants. And so that's why there's limited parking, because it's not a rural area. So that's why the tenants or the residents there are having a hard time parking. But I believe that what everybody, what everybody else was saying, that if the law enforcement enforced speeding, it would stop because people start breaking in Penbrook because they know they're being watched. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the left section that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, anyone in the far left that would like to offer public comment?
Evening. My name is Matthew Duvall. Lifelong resident, State Street, property owner, nineteen forty-four state. Been on State Street forty-nine years. The traffic from when I was a child has quadrupled. I live right on the corner of Twentieth and State. I've had three cars in my front yard from accidents, from cars trying to cross from Twentieth and beat the cars coming down State. Uh, I grew up on State Street. So dodging traffic is something that I've done all my life. And here I am. I am all for change in this city. I've done a lot of change to my block. I've done a lot of change to my properties that I own on the nineteen hundred block of State Street. I know about public safety. I worked for this city for fifteen years as a firefighter. I love this city. I don't care about PennDOT. I don't care about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that they're gonna give us to put a bike lane in. I care about my city, my block, the people on my block. These are my family, my friends, my neighbors. That's all that matters. PennDOT, who cares? What's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars when it comes down to it? Nothing. I am an avid bicycle rider. I was ranked fifth in the nation for riding bicycle, racing bicycle. I didn't go up and down State Street doing that. I watched the guys go across the greenbelt, Saturday, Sunday. Maybe three bicycles went down to State Street this weekend. But I can tell you, two hundred dirt bikes, four-wheelers. And it's not bad enough that it's adults doing it, but there's seven-year-old kids mocking the adults now. I ride dirt bikes, an avid motorcycle rider all my life. I don't ride in these streets unless my motorcycle has license, registration, and insurance. But can I now without that? No one's enforcing it. Is that okay? I think these people say no. I say no. They don't want to lie. I think everybody here wants change for the better. We can deal with a little bit of inconvenience. But we can't deal with changing our entire lives to hit a bike lane. I'll piggyback on everybody's stuff. Street lights, one green, one red, every block, whatever, rumble strips, turnarounds, the roundy rounds, whatever, they probably won't work on State Street, you know? But, you know, there's other priorities. There's other ways, you know? I don't know them all. I'm not an engineer. But I know one thing. Back when Rome was built, they didn't have engineers and they still have the same roads. We don't.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to the far left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing no one, this concludes our public comment portion. I would really like to thank everyone for taking time out of your schedules and your evenings to join us this evening and share your thoughts, comments, and concerns. Please know that we hear you. And I hope that Mr. Bullock, Mr. Decker, and Mr. Heasley, Heasley, Mr. Heasley. I have it written down. I was just cross-referencing. Mr. Wes Heasley. I want to make sure that you've heard everyone as well. So I saw that you were taking vigorous notes and that I hope that you put those notes to action as we move forward with the next steps, which will be to plan the public meetings. So thank you for your presence this evening. And before we adjourn, I just wanted to note a flyer that all council members receive just for the public's benefit. This is the, it's from the Neighborhood Square Watch Group. And on Thursday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM, there will be a walkthrough of the area. I'm just gonna read the flyer. So to the residents of the Hilltop Community, the first meeting for the Neighborhood Square Watch Group will be held on Thursday, May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, at six PM on the eighteen hundred block of Zarker Street in the old Dennis parking lot. This initiative will set the tone and be an example to the rest of the city of Harrisburg. We as a community are stronger when we stand together. The area we will be covering spans from Eighteenth through Twentieth and Dairy Street over to Eighteenth through Twentieth of Market Street and all streets, and all side streets, excuse me, included. So I just wanted to note that for the benefit of the public. The time is now eight twenty-eight PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. We stand adjourned.